Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 6:00 PM. Let me call to order the Merrimack Planning Board meeting for December 15th, 2015. Let me remind everyone who will address the board to please sign in and make sure the microphones are turned on and speak clearly into them. By way of announcement, our next planning board meeting will be January 5th at 7:00 PM in this Matthew Thornton room. Let me also remind everyone that our usual note taker is not here and that requires that the minutes of tonight be taken from the recording, so please be extra courteous in speaking clearly and for those addressing, introduce yourself clearly and remember to sign in. With that, let me appoint Nelson to vote in Mr. Russo's spot and Jeff to vote in Mr. Redding's spot for tonight. And with that, Planning and Zoning Administrators report.
I have nothing this evening.
Any questions by members of the board?
Yes, Mr. German. I don't know if anybody's noticed, but I see it every day. They're doing something pretty peculiar at Penney Chuck Square. They've put in some false roofs or half roofs which have effectively changed the angle of the slope. I don't know why they've done it. I can only think of three reasons. I just only hope that the building officer has done the necessary checks that they're complying. However, today I notice they're now building a completely new structure which looks a bit like a square block if you look at the old-fashioned Norman Castle. It's a square thing and it's now above the height of the existing buildings. Now, my guess is they're planning on putting advertising in or signs or something up there. Does anybody know, have they approached you, sir?
They have. Their work is architectural redesign in nature, did not require anything from the planning board or anything from my department. They are coordinating with the building department and all the permitting that's going on out there.
But if they put signs up there, they don't-
They'll have to get permits.
What? I didn't hear what you said.
They would have to get any permits for any new signage out there.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know. They would?
Yes.
Okay, as long as they-
They're compliant.
Hmm?
They're compliant.
We don't know what they're going to do yet.
They're compliant so far.
So far.
Hopefully, they'll continue down that path. Any other comments or questions by members of the board for the Planning and Zoning Administrator? You're not the Planning and Zoning Administrator, but for the Community Development Department Director. Seeing none, let's move on to item three on our agenda, which is the John J. Flatley Company. As the applicant and owner, in its continued review for consideration of final approval of an application for a site plan to construct 240 multifamily residences, clubhouse and associated parking and drainage improvements per the requirements of the Flatley Mixed-Use Conditional Use Permit. The parcels are located at 645, 673, 685, 703, and 707 DW Highway in the I-1 Industrial, Aqua Conservation, and Wellhead Protection Districts, and it is tax map 6E Lot 3-1, 3-3, 3-4, 3-5, and 3-6. The item is continued from the June 16th, July 21st, August 18th, September 1st, September 15th, November 3rd, and December 1st planning board meetings. And before we continue further, I will step aside and recuse myself, turn over the gavel to our most capable secretary.
Oh, she'll get you.
Careful, your microphone's on.
Yeah, I know. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Chad Brannon. I'm a civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. With me tonight is Kevin Walker from the John J. Flatley Company. And we are before you this evening to continue our hearing and review for the 240-unit multifamily housing project that we're proposing on tax parcel 6E 5-1, 3-1, excuse me.
Chad, could I just interrupt you for just one second to make certain, it's really for the benefit of the other members of the board, because we are doing the capital improvement programs for the town, the school board, and the wastewater district, that is going to start at 7:00, wherever we reach with your discussion tonight. So if we haven't got to the final position that you're happy with or we're happy with, at 7:00 we're going to have a slight recess on your stuff to allow the capital things to go through because it involves a large number of town staff. And so with your blessing or with your permission or even without it, that's what we're going to do. And I feel it's important that the members of the board know, we're not going to rush this because this is important, but if we cannot get it resolved by 7:00, we're going to have a recess, get the capital improvement things out of the way, which shouldn't take too long, and then come back to you. And I hope you know that and I hope you're comfortable with it.
Okay.
Sorry, apologize for interrupting, but I thought it was a good idea to make it clear what we're doing.
It's okay. Thank you. Appreciate the clarification. As the board may recall, we were last before you regarding the site plan approval, I believe it was in September. We were before the board in October and I think November, talking about the potential changes to the CUP plan. Ultimately, those didn't carry forward. We made a submission in September that addressed CLD's initial review for the project, and we've received a second review from CLD dated November 23rd. We've been working with town staff throughout the process and over the course of the last few months, trying to resolve outstanding issues. We do believe that we've been successfully able to address a number of the concerns, but there are a few items that we'd like to review with the board this evening and hopefully go over any questions that you may have. And I think maybe the best process in doing so would be to walk through the recent staff memo dated December 9th. If you see the fit, Mr. Chairman, I was planning-
That'll be fine. We've all got it, so we can all work through it together with you.
Sure. So I think the, you know, the first part of the memorandum addresses the background, which I think everybody is pretty familiar with. We will be going to the zoning board for a special exception strictly related to the pedestrian path and the bridge that we had talked about committing to. The access into the site, we understand, is a permitted use. We'll only be seeking relief relative to the pedestrian access. So that's certainly something that we understand and we don't have a problem with that as a condition of approval. We're actually in the process of submitting that. So moving down, the last paragraph under the heading background pertains to the Department of Public Works requesting that we provide an access from Allen Road to the site, and that is not something that my client is interested in doing. We've, we have talked about it in the past before the board. It was our understanding that the board would rather us not do that as well, but we wanted to have a dialogue this evening to confirm that and hopefully work through that. Throughout our review, you know, this paragraph, in our opinion, is somewhat in error because it says the Public Works Department and the Fire Department have recommended the access. We have no correspondence from the Fire Department requiring that, in fact, we have correspondence from the Fire Department saying that access to the buildings is acceptable as design. So I think that may have been misunderstanding, but nothing has been provided to us relative to the Fire Department. Certainly, when it comes to the Fire Department's input, you know, we try to get that early on. It's directly correlated to safety and that is one of our primary design goals. So for, I guess, just to explain the adjacent area, Allen Road does not come close to the site. There is, if I may just approach the-
Please do grab the other microphone, if you will.
This is Allen Road in this location here. It actually, Lantern Lane comes around and loops back this direction here. Allen Road is not even constructed through this area. It's a paper street, basically. So it's roughly 175 feet off of our boundary line. And then we have, you know, a wetland area here, associated buffers, and then this is our parking design in this location. So we have no interest in connecting through and doing that work. So that's certainly something that we, you know, want to address this evening and hopefully work through. Would you like me to move on or is it-
Please move on, yeah. I think we should discuss that towards the end when, if it's the only outstanding item, we'll resolve it. But I think you should, you've made your position quite clear, and I have a funny feeling the residents would probably make their position clear if they were here too. Please continue on the next, onto the, further on your memo.
Sure. Moving down, the completeness, the next item pertains to waivers. We did prepare a waiver request letter this evening. If I could, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to hand that out to the board.
Yes, okay. Well, no, it doesn't matter. As long, we can share them, as long as Tim has a copy and I suppose I have a copy, that's what really matters.
We can share. We want, we got enough.
Okay, well, we can, we know we've got to come back and discuss those as part of deliberation. Please go on, yeah.
So the waivers that are mentioned pertain to the location of buildings within 200 feet of the property and driveways within 300 feet of the property, and we do not quite locate all of them within those dimensions. And I could go through the letter if you'd like. The second waiver that's mentioned in the memorandum pertains to parking lot lighting. If you, it's my understanding as I read through the memorandum that I believe staff thinks that we need to request a waiver due to uniformity and also due to downcast, but the lights that we're proposing are full downcast. If you look at the lantern-style light, the bulb is actually located further up in the lantern, and there is a cover so that it is completely shielded by the top. So we do not need a waiver for that. In regards to the uniformity, there are a couple ways to calculate that. If we are too high, we would rather just revise the lighting plan and reduce the number of lights to address that. So we did not request a waiver from lighting due to that.
And staff is comfortable with that approach. Simply, the fact is, is that the plans that we have don't note the full cutoff with the detail for the light, and assuming that they can make the proper revisions, we'd certainly prefer to have compliance rather than the waiver.
Okay, so we'll actually all draw a line through the item two on that section. Okay, please carry on.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'm a little confused. The letter he just gave us, item number two, talks to driveway width.
No, 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 no. I'm going on the memo.
Oh, Julian's memo, okay.
Julian's memo. We're working our way through it.
Okay, okay, okay.
Sorry, sorry, it wasn't clear.
Okay.
Number three in the memo and number two on our waiver request letter pertains to the driveway width. Our design exceeds 36 feet. We're actually at 40 feet, and the reason we're at 40 feet is we've designed the intersection to meet DOT standards. Essentially, we have a 14-foot wide entrance to the property, and because it's required to be curbed, we have one foot separation off of each curb, so the entrance is 16 feet wide. We have two exiting lanes from the property. Each one of those lanes is 11 feet wide, and then with the one foot separation to the curb, that's 24 feet. And then we have a 10-foot wide median. So we're at 40 feet. That's the, we would have to cut into lanes, lane widths, and that would therefore not meet DOT spec, so we are requesting a waiver from that section accordingly. And then, when it comes down into potential items for conditional use permit, or excuse me, conditional approval, we do have a couple concerns relative to some of the comments within that section.
Well, those are the ones I think we'd like you to highlight so we can discuss them.
I guess the first comment that we have would be on number six. The applicant shall address the comments from the Conservation Commission as applicable. And letter, we're fine with all of them except for letter D because we think it creates some conflict if we're getting an approval of the plan based on our design. Letter D implies that we stay out of the 25-foot buffer, and in fact, we are inside the 25-foot buffer, but we're inside it with uses that are permitted, such as access. So it doesn't require a special exception for access. We have confirmed that with staff today with Jillian, and the other impact would be for the pedestrian walk. So it's, we just want to make sure that that particular paragraph doesn't require us to revise the plan.
May I look at you for a second, Tim? Do you concur with that?
Yes, Jillian and I both discussed the issue regarding the Wetlands Conservation District accessways that are integral and to the development of the property are permitted without the need to go to the zoning board of adjustments. So the driveway access is certainly permitted to be within that 25-foot buffer. However, they will need the special exception for the pedestrian way and the bridge, as was discussed earlier today.
Yeah, so we couldn't quietly scrub out 6D.
I would have no issue if the board felt that that was not-
Okay, we know that. Please carry on.
The, number seven pertains to the access to Allen Road.
We talked about that one, yeah.
And then the last item that we wanted to discuss pertains to number eight, and specifically number two under A, which refers to two existing gravel roads that are noted on the plan. They're called out in this paragraph as emergency access roads, and it's stating that the roads are to be graded and maintained to allow emergency access to the railroad. We have no problem with the Fire Department utilizing those roads for emergency access, but we are only proposing to improve them to the 250-foot shoreline setback line from the river. If we improve them any further than that, we need another permit. We also are not willing to plow them. I don't believe they are plowed currently, but certainly we will maintain the portions of our site that were required to. This just seems to be a little excessive as we're not proposing anything down by the railroad. So that's-
Point taken.
That's a concern that we have relative to the conditions. Outside of that, we are fine with all of the other comments. You know, many of the comments have actually been addressed, but just in the interest of, you know, the review timeframe and everything, they haven't been able to be checked and addressed for this evening's meeting.
Okay, you sort of glossed over them. May I touch on a few that I would like to clarify, and obviously my colleagues will do the same.
Sure.
You're okay with NFPA 13 compliant fire sprinkler system?
Yes, I believe that would be a building permit requirement.
Yeah, and the 72 fire alarm system?
That as well would be a building permit.
Okay, and you're comfortable with a comment from the wastewater division about sewer lines, manholes, et cetera?
Yes, and I believe our current plans, or the plans that we submitted in September, address a number of those comments, but I don't believe CLD reviewed the wastewater comments. So, but we have no issue with making sure those are cleaned up.
Tim, can I go?
The wastewater division has not yet had an opportunity to comment on the revised plan, given the change in leadership in the Public Works Department. Mr. Taylor is now has some additional responsibilities, so we will do our best to make sure that upon the submission of revisions, they make sure everything's dressed.
Okay, I throw this open to my colleagues. What is, what anybody else like to observe comments state? Nelson, I see you first up to the fray.
Okay, well, I have a couple things I wanted to talk about. The plans we have, I want to point out, are kind of obsolete, not truly obsolete, but they're old. They don't have incorporated yet all of the things that I think we've talked about. One of these being the, well, one of these being the road, the access road to the railroad tracks. I don't know why they want an access to the railroad tracks, to be honest, why the town wants it.
Well, I presume if a railroad car catches fire, and let's face it, if you look at the news recently, enough of them have seemed to have done so, I presume the Fire Department wants to be able to go and put the fire out. I'm guessing, that's, would be my guess, that's-
Your guess, okay. We don't have anything further? Is the reasoning-
That's actually, that's actually correct. When we spoke with the Fire Department, they had mentioned instead of going through their typical access, which is further north, that if they could get an access down to that area there, it would make their life a lot easier as far as any sparks that come off of the trains that are going down.
Yeah, they put the brakes on too hard and a few sparks go on the oily-
Right.
What's staying with it.
Yeah, so we had that discussion with the Fire Department.
Just before you go too much further, Kevin, since we don't have the secretary-
Yeah, Kevin, please make it-
I'm sorry, Kevin Walker from the John Flatley Company, my apologies.
Okay, so it's, my guess was what the Fire Department indicated to you, they just want access in the event of an emergency.
Correct, yes.
Nelson?
Yeah. This one I should have said first. This lot, 6E 3-1, is this already a separate lot of record or is there a subdivision being implied here?
It's already a separate lot of record. We are not proposing a subdivision at this time.
Okay, so that's, that was a clarification I wanted. The other thing I'd like to talk about a little bit is the potential parking lot expansion behind the Homestead Restaurant. It's so-called potential on here. It didn't seem to have quite enough grading consideration on it, and I was looking at a plan that's at a pretty high level, but has that lot been designed? In some of these plans, it doesn't show.
It features on page two, it doesn't feature on page 14, for example.
Pardon?
You can see it itemized on page two of their plan set that we got. It doesn't exist on page 14 of the plan set we've got, which is what I think part of the confusion.
Yeah, that and the-
These are the ones we've got. These are the older ones. You may on plan, page 14, have now incorporated it, but it sure as heck isn't on the one we've got.
Okay. So-
Yeah, it doesn't. I'm right, it doesn't.
The, these plans are the plans that we submitted in September.
Yes.
So we got a review from CLD from our September submission on November 23rd. Okay, so we, these details are not on the plans that you have, and they're not on the plans that we submitted to the town. The grading for that parking area is pretty minor. The site slopes back slightly, and so everything will grade, and I'll just explain it. We do have this designed. Everything will grade in this direction, and you can see we have a rain garden proposed right here, and so everything will be diverted into that rain garden and treated. The stormwater management system is-
I'm sorry, what page are you on there? Because-
He's on 14.
This is page eight.
Oh, page eight.
Page eight, okay. Page eight, I don't see the rain garden, I see a wetlands. Is that what you're calling the rain garden? Oh, this rectangular piece, okay. I got it, okay.
It's actually a-
A parallelogram.
Well, yes, it is.
Yes, trapezoid, whatever.
It's a rhombus.
It's a rhombus, actually. Square pushed, rectangle pushed over, yes. You're quite right. Yeah, it's a good technical term for you.
Okay, so that didn't seem to show the grading. It showed a fence going across the middle of the lot, but it didn't show the grading changes that would be necessary to accommodate that parking lot.
That is correct. This plan does not show the grading. As I stated just a minute ago, we were waiting for the second engineering review to come back before we, we can't submit plan, I mean, we can't pile plans on top of plans until we get feedback from the town's consultant. It doesn't make sense. It's going to create chaos, and I'm not sure that the town would even accept them. So, but the, what I can tell you is if you look at the contours, and you can see the contours that go through that lot right now, there's about three feet of elevation through that area, and you can actually see that the contours, the existing contours would be pushing the stormwater towards that rain garden. So we would be coming across that parking area, and it would simply sheet flow right into that rain garden area. But that's something that, you know, we would be happy to be part of a condition of approval to address that. It's in the stormwater management report. We've certainly made sure that all of the onsite drainage can accommodate that. If you recall, during the, one of the CUP hearings, we had the owner of the restaurant here, and it seemed like at the time the board was very, spoke positively about us trying to accommodate his needs with this plan, since I believe many of his customers are currently parking in the church parking lot and walking across Daniel Webster Highway. So I hope, I hope that better explains it.
Okay, I just, I just, my point really is that the plans we have aren't up to date. I guess that's my, one of my concerns about this evening's plan. So let's just leave that for a moment and talk about, there's no lighting shown on that parking lot. I don't know if there's any additional lighting planned in there as part of the use of that lot for the restaurant. It would be outside of the lighting envelope of what they have now.
I don't think the Homestead has parking, has lighting.
Just a question for the applicant and his engineer. Is the intent to show this as a potential future project or is it to be constructed as part of the project here? Because if it's intended to be a future project, it can be shown in a conceptual nature as part of this plan, but would require a site plan at some point in the future for that expansion?
It would be potential future. It would be potential future.
Okay.
And I think, and I mean, I guess it would be up to, up to the planning board and planning department, so maybe able to get done under some minor modification.
Well, then I think a note should clarify that or some way of clarifying what the intent was there. There's mention of an MS-4 permit issued by the EPA. This is back, I'm jumping now back to the December 9th memo where DPW recommends discussing provisions for new development, redevelopment as outlined in the draft MS-4 report, permit, which it says it's attached. It is, it was not attached to my copy.
It is in your packet. It's actually an email from Kyle to my staff that has the name Amy Casparius on the top, and it outlines the recommendations that Kyle has. It should be right after the, in the October 13th memo.
All right, I don't want to tie up everybody, but I do-
Is that, is that mentioned in the conditional?
Oh, yeah, I found it.
Is that mentioned in the staff memorandum?
It's in, it's in the last paragraph of the background.
Where in the last paragraph of what?
The background on page one of Jillian's memo. It says DPW recommends discussing provisions for new development-
Oh, yeah, yeah.
...as outlined in the draft MS-4 permit issued by EPA.
Okay. Yeah, it refers to a permit, and I was looking for the permit, but I see we've got something here to read a little bit, so.
The MS-4 permit is a municipal permit. It's not a permit that they would be responsible for obtaining. That's the EPA's-
It's just that he made reference to it and said it was attached, I couldn't find it.
It's an attempt and a request that they do what they can to ensure that the town remains compliant with those permit requirements as they develop their project.
And if I could just touch on that, and I apologize I missed that, and I would have brought it up. The MS-4 portion of EPA is not applicable to this project because we're not proposing any improvements to the municipal infrastructure. With that said, the alteration of terrain permit in itself addresses the majority of the comments that are raised in Mr. Fox's email pertaining to erosion and sedimentation and water quality and treatment, and that permit is a requirement of this project, and we will be obtaining that permit. So although I would have to take exception to the MS-4 permit just because it doesn't apply to us, I do think a number of the comments and suggestions within his email by default are going to be addressed and have been incorporated in our design because our design has been done to meet state standards, be addressed during the alteration of terrain permitting process.
I get that. Okay, I got to think about that. I'll pass it on to somebody else to talk.
Anybody else have any thoughts? Please, Desiree?
No.
No?
I'm good.
Okay, well, we'll move on to the waivers. Perhaps, shall we move to the waivers next? Everybody comfortable with that?
Sure.
Seeking, somebody like to make a motion? Do them.
I'll make a motion to approve, or to consider both waivers, one and three, as two was removed.
Um, seeking, um, somebody like to make a motion, do them?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, or to consider both waivers, one and three, as two was removed from the request here. Given that, uh, I think both cases, uh, exception number two makes sense. Specific circumstances relative to the site plan or conditions of the land in such site plan indicate that the waiver will carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations.
And, uh, and it's been seconded by Ms. Christensen, I'll take, anybody got any further comments? We'll take a vote on it, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody against? That's one, two, three, four, that's, mm, six, six, nil, the waivers are carried. Has anybody got any further comments they want to raise?
Yeah, I've got, got one more now, uh, I didn't ask, and maybe it's been answered somewhere, is this road, this service road that comes in to service all of these, um, department buildings, is that, uh, is that a town, that is not a town road, as I understand it, is that right?
Right.
That's correct.
It will be a driveway.
It's a driveway, yes.
It will be built to town standards, however, will it not?
The, the, um, construction materials certainly will be to town standards. Now, the, um, one of the comments, and I think it may have been addressed, um, in the memo in the first part, pertains to some of the street standards in town that we are not, um, adhering to, um, because they don't apply, is, uh, one section requires that the minimum grade be one and a half percent. Um, the slope of the parking areas are less than one and a half percent in some areas, primarily to meet ADA compliance and to push the, um, grading around the, the proposed garages. So if you take a look at, I guess in this example here, um, we have ADA parking spaces here, we also have an ADA parking space here. And the slope goes one point two percent in this direction and one point two percent in that direction. And the reason why we are not meeting one and a half percent is because it's not a requirement, really. Uh, but also because there's, it's sloping in so many different directions that we have to make sure the drainage and the ADA compliance is met. And, uh, so we're not meeting that particular, uh, standard. Again, it doesn't apply to, to parking areas, but just to point out, you know, to answer your question, uh, Mr. Disco, that's one item.
Just to clarify for Nelson and the rest of the board, the comment came in one of CLD's review that, uh, to question whether or not that needed to meet town standard. Uh, the throat of the driveway as it comes in and approaches the site certainly meets the requirements of town standards. Uh, however, once you get into the parking areas, that aisle as it goes in between the parking spaces does not meet town standards, as Chad has just described. And from a regulatory standpoint, we wouldn't expect an aisleway within a parking lot to meet a town roadway standard.
Well, I guess I'd like to go the next step. In the long term, isn't this part of a loop road that's going to eventually connect into the road that goes north through the property? This, this will be acting like a road at some point in the future when this is built out, right? Or am I wrong, or, what am I missing?
That is not correct, um, we do have, if I can find the right page, actually.
In the back of your packet, you should actually have the overall master site development plan from the CUP that has the outline of the overall project. Where you'll be able to see.
This is, it's an emergency connection that we are proposing, um, through the parking area, um, north of building three, and that was an emergency connection that would actually connect behind the retail space of the master plan, if I remember correctly. And you may recall that we were very reluctant to have that connection just from security reasons, but we did provide it because it was something that the board felt strongly about, um, but is not going to be intended to be a through fare, you know, throughway at all. And so I, I don't believe that would be the case.
Okay, I, uh.
So, but can I just sort of jump in? Where the, your driveway meets DW Highway, you comply with all the regu, the town regulations, the slope and the, the necessary distance, the upgrade at the last bit to.
That is correct, I mean, we, we comply with all the requirements through here, through this.
Okay.
And, and this is all going to function perfectly fine. It just, we don't meet the one and a half percent rate. I mean, the drainage is all going to go, you know, to their appropriate location. It's, my suspicion is the town, um, standard is that, you know, for road maintenance issues and stuff like that, where this is going to be privately maintained and, and owned, um, I would suspect if this was even a road or a through fare, that we would probably be requesting, uh, relief and, and have a pretty good argument for, for that particular request, but, um, that's correct, uh, and I appreciate, uh, Tim bringing that up, that in this section here, where it is strictly access, we are complying with all the requirements.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question on that little connector that goes to the retail pad? How do you expect the residents to get to the retail area? Would you expect them to go through there, or would you expect them to go out to Daniel Webster Highway? Sorry, this is Jeff Seabring speaking.
I would, uh, I would expect them to go whatever avenue they felt, you know, saw fit.
They would likely use that road then.
They, they could. The goal is, is that if anybody uses that road, and it had to do with the overall plan and, and my client's goals, is that it's really there for the benefit of the residents and not there for the benefit of the, the, the commercial users to come on to a residential property and utilize this as another way out, so certainly they could use that.
Okay, has anybody else got any queries?
Yeah, question, there's, there's a sidewalk shown, which I like, all the way across the front of the property, sort of set back from Route three, and, uh, at least it shows on this plan, maybe it's gone away in the new plan, I don't know, I haven't seen the new plan. Yes, no, I'm sorry.
That is correct, it was our understanding, um, in working with staff, that there were, there is a requirement to, uh, construct a sidewalk along the furniture of the property, and if you recall, one of the main topics that, or not main, but one of the topics that we discussed during the CUP process was that we would rather have that walkway be internal, um, because we want to bring people to the commercial users. And as such, we are proposing that along this area here, and it will, uh, eventually essentially follow an existing gravel drive that, that goes through the field area.
Okay, I just wanted to point that out, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, personally speaking, um, and I take what Nelson has said about the plans, um, I'm not just bothered about anything that's been presented tonight, and by and large, I, I feel the, the project is, is virtually okay. But personally, because the, there's been so many changes to the plans, me myself, and you may or may not agree with me, I feel that we ought to have a, we could give them an approval, conditional approval tonight, but I would still like to incorporate in that suggestion that we have a compliance hearing, simply for to give us the opportunity for them to submit a completed set of plans, which we could just go through. This doesn't mean we're going to change anything, but I think we'd like to see a completed set of plans, and that shouldn't hold the, the going ahead process, but it means we've got a chance just to make certain in our own mind, and before myself and presumably the chairman, the, the normal chairman will sign it, even though he's not taking part in the discussions, so that we're all happy, then you give us the go-ahead to sign those plans. So, that's my personal feeling, but I'm only myself. I'm awaiting a comment. Do you, do you gentlemen have a problem with that?
We do not have a problem with it. I would support that, Mr. Chairman, I think that's, that's appropriate, given the amount, the number of changes and the amount of things that, uh, are missing here. We don't have a, I don't have in my set anyway, a, an architectural view, and I know one was submitted sometime back, but I don't think it's in this set of plans tonight.
It is not, it is not in this, well, could I enter, somebody, I would entertain a motion there for somebody doing just what we've talked about.
Before you do that, I would recommend that that be made part of anybody's motion to conditionally approve.
Yes.
To add that as a condition. The one item that we still haven't finalized, and I want to make sure is clear, is the Allen Road connection.
Oh, sorry, I beg your pardon, I beg your pardon.
That's right.
Okay, any thoughts on the Allen?
I would like to hear more of the reasoning for it, I, I'd like to hear the argument i- in favor of it. Was there a memo or something written?
There really isn't, the, the comment that you see in item number seven from Jillian's memo is verbatim, the comment that we got from Kyle Fox from Public Works, that the project should connect to the right-of-way of Allen Road or the full town standard road or an emergency access road. If this were a standalone project, I would certainly agree with that recommendation and support it. But given that this is part of the conditional use permit for a multiple access, multiple use property, there are going to be other means of access and other ways of getting out to DW Highway once this property is built out. So I'm not, uh, as concerned about creating that connection to Allen Road. And frankly, I think if the connection were to be made, it should be a gated, emergency access only type of access. There should not be full access from this property into the neighborhood to the south. I certainly don't think that that's something that's warranted, given the fact that we're going to see two additional intersections with DW Highway eventually that will be connected throughout this property.
I was going to ask something, um, I guess it'd be nice to hear from the public to see if they have any, what do you say on that particular item, because maybe.
All right, yes, thank you very much, I, if, would any member of the public wish to join the discussion on this project before we go ahead? I'm looking at the people who might be interested. Madam, you, you got quite excited to move to look at the plans, do you want to address us? Uh, please do, if you do, you'll have to come and move, um, the gentleman, one of the gentlemen out. Please feel free to sign in the, on that piece of paper, which is right in front of you. Uh, he's, he was stealing the pen, I think, um, and just give us your name and address and give us your thoughts.
I'm Anita Craig, and I'm the president of the Historical Society. And you may not be aware, but we have been talking with Kevin about the potential for the area where the fish hatchery was, possibly either being donated or a long-term lease, lease for the Historical Society to make use of this.
So that's really, this is for the sort of further phases down the line?
This is way down the line, yes.
But you're therefore saying that you feel that, having talked with Kevin, he's an honorable man, and he's going to do everything the Historical Society would like?
Well, he, he will talk with us about it. One of his concerns right now is the condition of the house that's there, whether it would be something that is, could be used by the Historical Society or not.
Well, I think that.
If this were to come to be, it would be an advantage for everybody, because it would make the Historical Society be on Route three, where somebody could find us. They have trouble finding us right now, way over in South Merrimack. And it would also be an attract, an, an attraction for this whole development to have something historical there that would make it a popular thing, because it is part of our history of our town. When I moved to town, it was a fish hatchery. Well, that's the only reason I'm here tonight.
I'm sure one or two other members of the town probably also know it as such, looking at you, Nelson.
Oh, yes, we remember it as a fish hatchery. I don't think it'll qualify as commercial space, however, I'm sorry to say.
No, it would not, no, it would not.
Anyway, I, we appreciate your input. Does anybody else want to offer any thoughts? All right, let's take a, let's have a decision on, on the connection to Allen Road.
Yeah, kind of a question, I think, for the board. In my, in my opinion, those connections are bad, either one of them. It sounds like what we're saying is, what I'm saying is, I would not like to see that connection made. How do we, how do we?
Was, was that a motion, Mr. Seabring?
It doesn't need to be a specific motion, whoever, again, makes the motion for conditional approval can simply eliminate that recommended condition.
Thank you for the clarification. Mr. Mayon, you want to say something, sir, counsel?
Yeah, was there any explanation from Mr. Fox about why he wanted that connection?
That's what I asked.
Um, we. Never mind, I'm gone.
Yeah, we have not.
Okay, well, on that basis, can I have, go back to my original request that somebody proposes a motion?
I just wanted to point out one more thing about the Allen Road connection, and that is, I heard here tonight and that Allen Road, in fact, is just a right-of-way, and that there is no road in it.
Correct.
But, you're.
That road coming in, Ledge Lane does not loop around.
Okay.
That westernmost edge is Allen Road, and there are three houses on Allen Road.
Okay, so then I just want to, I just want to clarify then that this.
That's the Allen Road extension.
The, right, that Allen Road through this section, meaning from the Lantern Lane and Allen Road intersection, is not built in this direction. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's what I understood you to say, and I just wanted to point it out again as another reason to perhaps not include a, a connection at this point.
Well, by my, by my reckoning, if that's not built, the town would have to build it, because you can't expect the applicant to necessarily build it, because it's not on the applicant's property.
Oh, you could, he could do it, he could do it.
Well, he could be encouraged to do it.
If the board were to require that, it would be considered an off-site improvement, because it is a public right-of-way.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, go back to where we were.
Before, just to summarize, before somebody makes a motion, I just want to clarify that I have what the thoughts of the board were. Uh, with regard to recommendation, uh, condition number six D, that was to be removed.
That is correct.
Item seven was to be removed.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then there would be an additional condition requiring that a compliance hearing take place prior to final signature of the plan.
Correct.
And I have article, um, eight A, Roman numeral two, has the question about the access roads and whether they're going to be plowed.
And, and if I may. The railroad bit.
Yes.
And we're only going to build them to.
To two hundred and fifty.
Two hundred and fifty foot setback, too, and that is what the plan shows, okay.
If, if that's the will of the board, we would eliminate that number two, because it would be shown as, as discussed.
Okay.
Uh, the other question I have, more for the applicant than it is for the board, is with regard to the typical six months for conditional approval, is that going to be enough time for you to obtain the permits you need to move forward, or do you need additional time on that?
I think in the interest of being conservative, since the DOT permit is, is rather substantial, we would appreciate it if the town would consider additional time. Um, otherwise, we may find ourselves back here.
That's what I wanted to try to avoid. I'd recommend that the board grant a twelve-month period for the conditions of approval, rather than the typical six.
I'd agree with that.
I'm listening for the motion.
Documenting.
All right, I will make.
Victor, we'll leave you out, as you haven't taken part at this immediate time, but once this is over, we'll, we'll let you come back and play.
This will be my last official act tonight, I will make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to, uh, grant a final approval to this project uh, with the conditions as outlined earlier this evening, of the four or five conditions, plus the condition that this come back to the board for a compliance hearing after the plans have been revised in accordance with the agreements we've made tonight.
And that includes a twelve-month conditional.
And, and a twelve-month period in which to accomplish this.
Okay.
Yes, that all this be done within twelve months.
We have a second by Ms. Christensen, does anybody want to comment any further? Can I just have a show of hands on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in fa, anybody against saying, well, there can't be, we all voted yes, so it's six, zero, zero. Gentlemen, you've been very patient with us, you have your approval. We look forward to having the compliance hearing within reasonable time while we, while our memories are still good. But otherwise, thank you very much for your time and effort, and on behalf of this board, Merry Christmas.
You too.
Thank you very much. And with that, I'm very glad to hand the gavel back to my chairman, wherever he's hiding. Oh, he's, he's appeared again. He's in disguise with this, this bearded.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, with Vincent's arrival, that would put Nelson back to alternate, I believe, based on my notes?
Yes, it would, and if, um, by my scorekeeping, I think that Nelson has been appointed to a voting position more often than Jeff, so let's let Jeff catch up tonight. With a couple of these, so Jeff will be in a voting position, Nelson in an alternate position. With that, um, Mr. McCall, are you ready to proceed, or you want us to do a couple of other things for a few minutes, or?
Do you want to kill the minutes before, is the town manager joining us? Oh, well, then, let's flash off.
No, no, if you're ready, come, come forward. That brings us to item four on our agenda, which is discussion of the capital improvements program for the town of Merrimack. Tim, I know that there's probably nothing to add to that other than introductions, so.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, this is the first of the three discussions on the capital improvements plan, uh, the first being the town's. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, this is the first of the three discussions on the capital improvements plan, uh, the first being the town's, uh, municipal CIP. That'll be presented tonight by Assistant Town Manager and Finance Director Paul McCally on behalf of the town manager. Following that, tonight, we will have the school district's presentation, and then likely at one of the January meetings, we will be hearing from the folks from the Merrimack Village District. So this is the first of the three steps the planning board will take. We'll go over the presentation from the town staff, and then, following that, we'll go through and do the prioritization of the projects as the planning board sees fit.
Thank you, Tim. Paul, I got a supply of cookies if you need some during the middle of your presentation, so just say so. With that, um, don't forget to introduce yourself, obviously, we know you well, but for the record.
Good evening, my name is Paul McCally, Assistant Town Manager, Finance Director for the town of Merrimack. Uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak before the board tonight.
Paul, I can't tell if your microphone is on. Is it close enough to, you know it, there we go. Take your time, if it takes a second to get the computer the way you like it.
I'm not used to that computer.
More?
Oh, my goodness. As you proceed with this, for, um, many of the paving items and sort of routine maintenance, you can feel free to keep your presentation of those as brief as you need it to be, since there's not a lot of interest talking about paving.
Just trying to get the, uh, screen working, which doesn't wanna work tonight for some reason. Shouldn't be video, it should be video. Okay. Technical difficulties here.
Could we ask the technical staff, can you get that screen to work as well?
Just trying to, yes, it should. What do you wanna do?
Does this cookies get stalled over there? Don't steal them, they're free.
Trade, trade.
Yeah, we gotta save so much for ten minutes. Sometimes the world doesn't cooperate.
I have to say, Kate doesn't seem to worry about always slides.
New technology. Once again, thank you for having me tonight. I'd like to go over the, the town's portion of the CIP project. The, the town, as you know, develops their, uh, CIP projects based on a number of factors. This screen's a little bit hard to read. This is, uh, basically, we have twenty-one projects that we look at in the major category, from, uh, a fire station, a big bridge replacements, to paving, to the highway garage, to other placeholders that we'll go over a little bit later on, uh, like in the library and new library, new athletic fields, and things of that sort. Um, what I, would like to discuss is our bridge projects. As you know, we have the most aggressive bi- bridge program in the state of New Hampshire. It started back in two thousand and eight with the Bedford Road, uh, near the Jopper Road intersection replacement, and has continued on and will continue on to two thousand and nineteen, when we hopefully complete the US Route Three or start the US Route Three Bridge down by the MYA Building. Uh, this year, we're undertaking two bridges, Magar Road Bridge and Bean Road. Uh, they both, uh, actually went out to bid, and construction should start within the next couple of weeks, hopefully, if the weather holds out still. But, uh, hopefully, we can get those projects up and running within ten months. Uh, Bedford Road is on the burn, back burner and ready to move forward once we go through the budget process and we begin the two thousand sixteen-seventeen, uh, bridge program with the state. As I said, the, the Bedford Road Bridge, it's a, a culvert bridge. It's the same kind of bridge that was over in Wire Road. It's the same road that failed, the same kind of bridge that was over in, uh, the Bean Road that failed. Um, we have, uh, replaced it, uh, some help with it in the May two thousand and six Mother's Day flood. So it's a little bit newer techn- um, a newer culvert bridge, however, uh, it's still, uh, arch steel pipe, and those seem to be failing throughout the state, so we're looking to get that done in the sixteen-seventeen timeframe. We continue with our storm drainage drain projects, uh-
Can I ask you a question on bridges before you leave those?
Yes.
With the list of, uh, bridges on your overall view that goes through the Route Three DW Highway Bridge in two thousand and nineteen, is that all the red-listed bridges in town?
Uh, those are all our bridges, basically, in town that, that would, uh-
Every single one, not just the red list, that's all of, okay.
That's basically every, every major, major road-crossing bridge culvert that, that we have. There are some smaller, smaller culverts and things of that sort, but these would be, be considered bridges with the span.
Okay.
Uh, can I ask you a question? Um, these culvert bridges, looks like they're about forty years old. Um, will you be replacing them with the same type of technology?
No, actually, uh, the Bedford, the Bedford Road, Bean Road, Magar Bridge are actually gonna be steel-constructed bridges. They're gonna be wide enough spans that, uh, that, uh, their bridge material, decking, things of that sort. It's no longer a culvert or a steel-gavenized pipe.
And what's the useful life of the bridges that would be building?
Uh, we're hoping for fifty years, but in this area, all depends on moisture and, you know, the steel and everything that goes along with that. Bridge maintenance programs and things of that sort, so.
The Romans built bridges that are still standing. I'd just point that out.
And they were all stone.
We don't, we don't have the serfs to carry the stone.
Don't forget, Nelson, they were stone, no steel in those days.
Yeah, well, we've got plenty of stone here, too.
They didn't have sixty-three hundred cars a year on theirs, though, a day on theirs.
Maybe one or two. Uh, the stormwater drainage improvements, uh, we, we go through a number of, when we're, when we're looking at roads and paving roads and, and looking at placing sort of these bridges and things of that sort, we go through the whole gamut. We look at the stormwater drains, we look at a bunch of other, of, other projects as we go through when we fix up our roads, whether it's adding water, adding natural gas lines, and when we look at improving our roads. Uh, it's anticipated that, uh, for the fifteen-sixteen construction season, we're gonna be looking at Amherst Road, Brenda Lane, Wilson Hill Road, Water, Waterville Drive, Thornton Road, and then we have to go around and, and repair our basins after the winter as, as the ground sinks around and we try to go back and, and replace them. And this is all part of our stormwater permit and, and other things that go along with stormwater drainage improvements, and we, we look at the list and we go through the list, and then we'll update the list. If there's more town basins that need to be, be repaired, maybe one or two of these roads would drop off as of, uh, the drainage projects.
It's probably true of all the roads, but it strikes me that Wilson Hill in particular, pretty long road, is there a section that's having drainage problems, or is it the whole thing?
Well, we look at, we look at certain sections more than others, um, and we go through the whole road and, and, uh, when we look at these kind of projects, we'll, we'll get the whole road and see where we need to make our drainage improvements. It's kinda like the bridge projects. The reason why we're doing US Route Three Bridge last is because that's the last bridge in, in the stream. When we did our, our water flows and things of that sort, we found out that the bridges, if we would've done US Three and made that the right bridge, we'd still have the problems upstream. So we're working our way down. It's the same thing when we look at Wilson Hill. We'll work from one end and work our way down on that to see where the problems may lie.
Also, with respect to Wilson Hill Road and perhaps some of these others, um, there's some, I, I, it's probably the whole length of it, but it's fairly narrow travel lanes on Wilson Hill Road. And I don't know if it, it gets repaved ever, whether it'll sort of be upgraded to be the ten- or twelve-foot travel lanes that are more common around town. And if so, then obviously, you're thinking ahead about that as you do the drainage on the sides of it, might be part of-
We'll, we'll take that all under advisement. I'll bring it back to our DPW department, and when we look at these things.
Okay.
Keep in mind that this would be a project that would be on, would be bigger than rebuilding Natticoop Road.
Right.
When they did that in the nineties.
No, I understand.
And that was, and that ended up being one point four million dollars when they estimated seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do it.
Well, I, I don't doubt it.
And so, you know, there's be, you know, you, you drive that road and you can almost see where the surprises will be when you drive that road and where you're gonna have to, you know, do significant blasting and, and whatnot. You know, and Nelson's lived out there a long time. I only drive it occasionally, and even then, I'm looking at it, Johnny, oh, this would be a nightmare to rebuild. Yeah, basically, the road was built without any underpinnings- Yeah. Or anything to it. These, uh, it's built on ledge in some places, or some very large boulders that-
Sounds a bit like Tinkalane.
Yes, yeah, same kind of thing, only more of it, you know, that's-
Yeah, 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 well, it's longer.
Yeah. The reason the roads are there is because Nelson's house was there, you know, to begin with.
He was there first.
Yeah.
Used to be Nelson's Hill Road, but now it-
We have, um, moving on to paving, we have four hundred and seventy-five roads in this town that are, that have been accepted, about a hundred and eighty miles of center lane. Um, we go through, um, a paving index, a paving condition index each year. Um, we, as, as we look at what roads that need to be paved, and we use this paving index to rate the roads and, and to score the roads. Last year, we, as you know, we did DW Highway and part of the Blueza Lake Road, uh, Wire Road from the bridge basically to the, the four corner stops, the four, the four-way stop on, uh, between Wire and Bedford. Um, looking at these roads, we also try to make these roads, when we're paving them, if there's projects going on, like Magar Bridge, we'll be doing the bridge this year, we'll be looking at repaving that once the bridge is complete, so. We try to, to try to utilize the, the paving money in conjunction with our projects, and, and when we do major overhauls to roads, we use our paving money for that as well. So we try to get as many roads as we can done with the money. Town Council has put seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the budget for the last couple of years. That has, uh, we've got really good pricing when we go out to bid for our asphalt, so we, we're allowed to, we afforded the opportunity to do more roads as we go through it. We're hoping that that continues, um, and we, like I said, we try to, we try to group the roads, too, in an area, so one road might be a little bit lower on the C, PCI versus another, but if it's in the area, it's a lot less cost for the contractor to go out there and mobilization costs and things of that sort. So we're trying to get about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the asphalt down a year on the roads in Merrimack.
Thank you, Paul. I, I commend the administration and the town council for having a proactive plan that covers these things a bit at a time to kinda smooth out the impact of that. Do you have a sense that the useful life of these repair, repaired roads are meeting the expectations? Are they wearing out faster? Are they lasting longer?
I think they're meeting the expectations that, that are set forward in, in the paving index. Um, we're trying to do our feeder roads, so to speak, more often than, than a neighborhood. So we're looking at the Blueza Lake Roads, the, the Daniel Webster Highways, the, uh, Wire Roads, the Continental Boulevards, and looking at those stretches of roads, and we're trying to get them on a more frequent schedule than a, a neighborhood that might be on a thirty-five-year schedule. A feeder road might be on a ten-to-fifteen-to-twenty-year schedule, depending on the number of traffic volume.
But you feel like the work that's getting done is meeting the quality expectations?
Yeah, we're, we're, if, if we need to rebuild the road, we're, we're rebuilding the road. We're going through, sometimes we're just putting a top coat on the roads that we feel have a good base, other times, if we need to rebuild it, it's a little more money, and we spend the time to, to rebuild the roads.
Thanks.
And of course, when we're doing our paving projects, we also look at the drainage project, project as well, if we have to rebuild. So Hegan River Trail, um, this was a grant that we received. Uh, basically, it will, uh, take into account Chamberlain Bridge, we'll be able to repair Chamberlain Bridge, the sidewalk there. Um, it goes underneath the sluice way, it will connect the, um, the trail from Watson Park out, uh, by the fire station. Um, the north side of the river, and this project is being paid eighty percent by the state of New Hampshire and twenty percent by the town. So that was a very, Nelson sat on the committee that put this proposal together, and it was a very, very good get for the town of Merrimack to be able to do this, a project like this for only twenty percent of our dollars. And the reason why we were fixing up Chamberlain Bridge is, it's, there was a cost share associated with the project, and that cost share will be fixing the bridge, the sidewalk, removing those metal plates, and actually re, redoing that sidewalk. It's cantilever sidewalk, we're gonna go ahead and, and redo that sidewalk, so it's no longer a cantilever, lever sidewalk. We're gonna shore it up so that it's a solid sidewalk now. So when that project just start, probably-
Paul, could I ask you one question? Going back some years, I mean, certainly pre-Tim, I seem to remember somebody telling me that the, 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 the wall, the side, the walls, if you like, that stops people falling off the sidewalk into the river, those walls were not ver- were very well-connected to the rest of the bridge structure. Is that the case, or do my, is my memory at, at fault there?
I don't know if they were structurally tied. I think it was the height of them.
Okay.
On, um, on the height, and if we do any major repairs on this bridge, we're gonna have to fix that problem and raise those up to meet standards. But by redoing the sidewalk, that's not a major repair to the roadway of the bridge.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
But if you're putting supports under the bridge so it's no longer cantilever, that's kind of a big deal, isn't it?
On, on the side, it's on the opposite side, it's not the bridge itself.
I'm sorry, what?
It's on the, it's on the side, nor, the northerly side of the bridge, underneath, it's not the bridge structure itself that we're, we're fixing. We're fixing the, the approaches.
Okay.
Either side.
I understand, I got you.
There's a retaining wall being built, Chairman, that will, and then it'll be filled in. So the retaining wall basically moves out, and then it gets filled in, so that under the sidewalk is solid earth now, instead of the cantilevered, uh, sidewalk that was poured concrete.
Right.
It was tied into the other retaining wall that'll still be there.
Okay, I understand now.
Those are our projects that we have on, on schedule for sixteen and seventeen. In the presentation has some more backup for other projects that, that we're looking at over the next several years, the next five years. And as we get moving forward, these will move up, um, projects that, um, like I said, there are a couple of projects that are, are placeholders as the library. You know, the library's still looking at a new library versus repairs to the current library. They have taken an approach to look at how much it's gonna cost to repair versus how much is it gonna cost to replace it, and, and they're going through those, those, uh, numbers and those gyrations, and they asked for a placeholder to be put out in, in the last year of the CIP for that. Athletic fields, they can change in a matter of notice, depending on the, some of the rental fields that we have, so that's why there's a placeholder out in the out-years with, uh, some of those, uh, issues with, uh, athletic fields, and that's why we put that out in the last year, just as a placeholder, just, uh, keep it on the plate, just keep it fresh. The town council has made a conscious effort about the highway garage. It's not gonna be on the ballot this year. Last year in the budget, there was twenty thousand dollars put towards some more information, gathering some more information, and we're in the process of hiring some consultants to help us gather that information, so that it hopefully can be put forward on the, uh, two thousand and seventeen ballot vote.
Is the, is the amount of money that's shown on the plan today the same as what was considered when it was on the ballot?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and we're looking at some, some other issues, and, and hopefully, there can be some other, we're, we're looking to be in that three-point-three-million-dollar range.
I'm not critical of the planning. I supported it at the ballot box. I think it was very necessary, and kind of just wondering if the plan had sort of developed over time, just because as time goes by, things always cost more.
It does, and we're still looking at the three-point-three. There's, there's a lot, there were a lot of unknowns that we're trying to work out, like the ground. What's, you know, blurring and things of that sort, that we're trying to see if we can get some of that guesswork out of it, so we can really tie down a price for, for the highway garage.
Okay. But in any event, that's a couple of years off, anyway.
Yeah, that, that would be in the seventeen, eighteen.
Okay.
Yeah.
What's the latest on the fire station?
Um-
That's okay, go ahead. Mine's towards the end, I have a question, Paul.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Um, the fire station is in, uh, the following year. Um, I believe it's in the eighteen-nineteen year of, of the, uh, CIP. We're looking at, um, some minor repairs that we're gonna do this year to the building. And we're looking at, uh, a lot is hinging on, uh, a certain project that won't be named, that might be moving through the area, so a lot is hinging on, uh, that, that project.
You mean the pipeline?
I didn't say it. You know, there, there's some routes that, that potentially take it through that parcel land, so we have to look at, at that, and, uh, so that was pushed off to eighteen-nineteen until we can get a better handle on that, and plus, the council has made a determination that the highway garage is the number-one priority in buildings. So with that being said, pushing out the highway garage, that got pushed out another year also.
I don't disagree with the prioritization. So, this item that's listed on the CIP is on the same parcel where the fire station exists now or is there a different spot?
There was a vote, I believe, Tom, three years ago now, four years ago?
At least four.
At least four.
At least four.
Last time I was chairman, so, probably four years ago.
There's a tract of land that is on Continental that was school property. And it's tied, the vote was tied to getting funding to build it. If the town got funding to build it, the school would donate the land to us from Continental Boulevard. And we would build it.
A portion of the lot, three acres of the twelve acres on the lot.
Okay, I understand. Who was first, Nelson? Let's go.
Oh, I just had a question. On that same subject, there is a donation toward the fire station, a six hundred and fifty thousand dollars private. And does that expire at some point and if so, when is that point?
It does not, Nelson. Part of the development agreement, that money does not expire.
It does not expire, thank you, that's good news, okay.
Tim, you had a hand up?
I did. Just for clarification, Paul, when we go to do the recommendations and the scoring, the Bean Road Bridge was actually the previous fiscal year, this current fiscal year. So, we do not need to put a priority on that, the same with the DW Highway paving?
That is correct. I'd just like to show what we're doing in this current year to get the whole picture.
Just wanted to make the board aware, we'll skip over those when we get to actually assigning a priority to those projects.
You skipped McGaw Bridge too, which...
Yeah, that's, actually, that was in last year's budget, fourteen, fifteen budget. And we figured that with economy of scales of now of going out with Bean Road. And there was a, with McGaw Bridge, there was a holdup and the holdup was at the state level. So, it was the permitting at the state level. And there was a holdup with them and the historic nature of the bridge and conditions and other things that occurred. And that kind of delayed that project almost, delayed it a year before we got final approval to go ahead with it.
The rest of the information in your package, is that something you want to present to us or is this just information?
That's just backup information if, you know, it explains the projects and the out years.
Okay. Other comments or questions, by the way?
Yeah, one, a couple of questions on the bridge replacement. Just looking over the information you provided, I would almost want to have thought that you would reverse Bean and Bedford Road bridges. You had done one before the other.
Yeah, the Bean Road Bridge kind of got thrown up through the forefront about a year ago. The state came in and closed that bridge. So, it's a closed bridge right now, you cannot use...
Six months ago.
Six months ago. A year ago, they came in and reduced the tonnage. Six months ago, they closed the bridge. That's by the upper portion of Bean Road. So, that's why that got moved up in priority.
Other comments or questions?
And they have started on Bean Road.
Nobody's made any decision about your Wire Road into DW Highway connection yet?
No, that depends a lot on traffic study. Because if the rotary is there, from what I was told, if you put a rotary in there, you can't have back, traffic backing up from the Baboozza Lake intersection into a roundabout. So, it all depends on traffic study. We did a traffic upgrade, signalization project between Front Street and Baboozza Lake Road. Those lights work in agreement with one another now. So, they'll probably have to do another traffic study once we get closer to the US. And that project is put along with the US Route Three Bridge. We're all gonna, we're gonna do that intersection and the bridge at the same time.
The other thing, in your write-up for that, you refer to nineteen accidents over a period of six years. I would think there are other parts of the town where you've had a much higher accident rate. I'm thinking particularly of Amherst Road where Natticook and Meeting House Road connect there. That is a dreadful junction. I'm sure there'll be more than nineteen accidents there in recent history. Natticook Road comes down, Meeting House Road comes there, is a sort of hundred feet gap between the misalignment of those things. That road is, you get an enormous...
No.
I mean, I drive that corner every time I go to Home Depot, but yeah. There've been plenty of accidents, I can assure you, when I was driving in this town on a regular basis. Numbers of times that junction's been called out.
I don't have those...
I'll talk to the police, I'll find out.
Yeah, I don't have those, that information available.
I just toss it.
We can always look at it, we can ask our highway safety committee to look at that and see if that's something that needs to be looked at.
The one problem that does exist there is the fact that when you try to look east at that intersection, you can't see
That's exactly so.
The road, okay? Well, I did bring it to the highway safety committee and they poo-pooed the whole thing and said, no, we don't need to do that because they would have to cut down four trees on a particular property.
But there have been, I can tell you, from, at school periods of time.
They hang out, the cars hang out over the stop line.
Yeah.
And some of them are quarter of the way or halfway, half a car length out into Amherst Road. Try to see around that corner because the road bends back away from you at that point.
If there are no other comments or questions, does the board wish to hear the other CIPs from the school district? Or do you want to vote on prioritization of these or how would you like to proceed?
I'd like to hear the others.
Yes, I agree.
I think that's probably the most courteous way to manage with our...
I think out of courtesy, we should let the school superintendent and the administrator go home, so we'll vote later.
I appreciate that too.
Thank you very much for the presentation and for answering all of our questions, we really appreciate it.
Thank you for having me and happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, safe and happy New Year, everybody.
Thank you, Paul.
You too, and if you need some cookies, come get some.
Yes, goodness sake, Paul, have a handful.
And then we'll give the school department a minute to come get set up, school district, I'm sorry, not department.
Well, I had to have them, I don't have anything else. I have the kids, the kids testing.
The granddads are coming on Sunday.
You're making cookies for the girls.
Well, they got a new kitchen, why not?
Two dozen. We use cookie, cookie dough.
How's your same-made cookies and be like, yeah, pass those out, make some fresh ones.
We'll be sugar down the moms.
Get them crazy and give that to moms.
Okay. Take as long as you need to get set up and get the technical bugs worked out. And then, when you're ready, please introduce yourself for all the folks at home and proceed.
I think we're all set. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Matt Chevanel, I'm the business administrator for the school district. To my left is our school board chairman, Mr. Chris Otega. And sitting there on the first bench is the superintendent of schools, you all know, March Chaffery. I am the leadoff hitter and they are the cleanup hitters for us here today. So, we'll go across and we'll...
Were you aware of that, Chris?
He was the cleanup hitter? Yeah, I think, I think...
No.
He carries himself that way.
Thought I was window dressing.
Window dressing.
I do, I have to make the comment, I'm missing the purple shirt from last week.
You are, yeah, I was, I didn't want to redo a redo of that too early for fear of wearing it out. So, I was almost thinking lime green tonight, but I figured I'd go conservative with black.
Conservative, that's a little Johnny Cash thing going on there with the man in black.
Hey, like I said, once you get a reputation, it just carries forwards, yes. So, anyway, thanks, thanks for letting us come before you tonight. You have a copy of our capital improvement program, compasses, of course, six years per year directive. And I'm just gonna go horizontally across the different projects. A lot of these you're familiar with, you've seen before from prior years. I believe there is one that is new, the window replacement at the high school, but we'll get to that later on. So, let me just click and begin. Two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, we talked about this unit. I believe this unit is old enough to run for president and to be in the presidential debates as of late because they don't seem to have enough candidates up there on the podium. So, it's around a good thirty years old. It's an old HVAC, HVAC system that recirculates air from the cafeteria, tempers it and then brings it into the building before it's conditioned by the heating system. This unit is such that when something breaks, there are no repair parts available for it anymore. And we have to weld joints and those welds in particular stress points are getting to the point where, you know, how many times can you weld a weld? So, if this does go unexpectedly, we would be without proper heat in the cafeteria and the food service area for around a good two months until we had a replacement. Now, that's not so bad in September or August or whatever, but when it gets to be December, January, not a good thing. So, we're looking to replace this unit with something of a different design. That design's all been put forward by Honeywell. We did the roof over this section last year and we took into account where these smaller units would be going because we're not gonna put this big unit back. Because you can't take air from a cafeteria area and then recirculate it in a wheel because of the grease factor going on in there. Right now, this does not meet current fire code. We couldn't replace it with a unit as is. So, we're going with a new unit, different design, hopefully more efficient. And the cost of that is five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars and that's slated for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. The roof projects, we have one of those every single year for the next six years and beyond. The first portion you're going to see is the majority, around three quarters of the middle school roof going from the westerly side of the building where the playfields are towards the cul-de-sac or circle towards Old Blood Road. We would be doing that portion first as a natural break in that area. And so, we'd be replacing that section of the roof. Let me give you an idea of some of the issues we're looking at right now. There's failures at the seams, there's also splits between the seams. And what you're seeing right now basically is an area where you have a seam and a seam and in the middle of the seam, there's nothing, in the middle of the piece of material, there's no seam, but there's a spreading of the material that's kind of coming apart. So, we've been patching those in linear strips. You can see the patch on the upper right-hand side. You can see a new separation coming onboard. And I think we did around two thousand linear feet of patching over this past summer into the fall to get us through this winter. So, that's a problem. So, we've classified that as urgent to get it done in the spring. And hopefully, you'll feel the same when reviewing this.
I was gonna ask a question regarding that. So, that's a TPO roof, you guys have been before us with that one. You mentioned that it's failing quickly, it was also like a ten or fifteen-year roof.
It was a ten-year, it was a Gen Flex, ten, they're out of business right now. It's a ten-year warranty. We didn't expect, we expected to get at least twenty out of it, didn't happen that way.
Yeah.
We had our insurance carrier come over and take a look at it to see if there's any way we could go back on the company or they could, we could collect some sort of claim because perhaps with the last few severe winters that have been absolutely horrid on roof structures, that maybe there was some way we could work it out to get it repaired under insurance dollars or something like that. And that was a no-go. What they think as far as, this is just their own postulation on what have occurred, could have occurred, is when they had the sheets of material, let's say they're around a good ten feet, twelve feet wide, they could have folded them back on one another, left them there for a period of time and then opened them up and then put them in place. That could have caused an initial weakening during the initial install, we're not sure.
My experience, I'm an architect, the TPO roofs have, they've been having issues with it, the older, the older ones. The newer ones, we've been using more of the EPDM. But I heard, I had met with Tom Toussot previously regarding kind of all the roofs and I was wanting clarification if you guys are gonna be doing a multi-layer roof like you do at all the other campuses for this repair.
We were planning on doing the multi-layer roof with the insulation and then the seven different layers and the tar in between, similar to what we've been doing. They have around a thirty-five-year warranty. Yes, sir?
No, no, that's the bit I was looking for. I was waiting to hear the warranty word.
Yeah, I will not be replacing this roof. Someone else here, sitting in front of you, will be talking about this roof, but it will not be me thirty-five years from now.
But it's got a thirty-five-year guarantee?
Yes, sir, it does.
That's what I was after.
Then, in seventeen, eighteen, why not finish off the rest of it? So, the only reason why we're not doing it all as one big project is to try and spread the cost because we do have that heat wheel project or that HVAC system of five hundred thousand dollars. So, we think we can get away with spreading the cost, cutting it over two years and then getting it done in that fashion and then having something really good that'll last us well into the future as we've been doing with all the roofs that we've been replacing. They've all been thirty, thirty-five-year warranties. So, nothing we do now, you're going to see in the near future. The next roof we have is Reed's Ferry Elementary School. These are the ninety-seven additions that you're looking at in yellow. Those are going to be slated to be replaced for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. And then when we go to nineteen, twenty, you've got same situation at Thornton's Ferry. And Reed's Ferry right now, Tom Toussot walks the roofs at least two to three times a year. Sometimes he even gets me up on the roof too, which I don't really care for, but I do it anyway. And he looks at these and evaluates them and right now, it's his guesstimation that Reed's would come before Thornton's but when we get closer to that point in time, Thornton's could come before Reed's depending upon how they look at the particular point in time that we're doing the CIP or the budget at that spot. So, right now, we'd be looking at doing Thornton's Ferry, same situation. And then we want to go back and hit the upper elementary school for four hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. The areas in yellow are the areas where we're looking at. And then we would go and do the rest of Thornton's Ferry Elementary School, which was done at various times over the years and would be out of warranty and we would just kind of go through and complete that building. And then we would head back to the upper elementary school in two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. There's eleven acres of roofs in the district and you've heard us talk about the several times so you probably knew there were eleven acres of roofs. And when you think of a roof and you think of a flat roof, you think of, okay, just going from one end of the building to the other. But it's, as you can see with the different levels and the different construction periods, you know, these were buildings that weren't built all at once, they weren't built all at one level. They were built and added on to at different periods of time. So, I think it's fortunate for us that they were because unlike the middle school, we're not looking at doing it all at the same time. We're looking at doing it when they expire and they become, before they become problematic. We know that by doing patching on them, keeping tracks of what we patch when we patch and the numbers of times we have to do it. The main thing we want to do is we want to avoid a situation where you have wet insulation, wet roof tiles, wet ceiling... The main thing we want to do is we want to avoid a situation where you have wet insulation, wet roof tiles, wet ceiling tiles. You don't want to have buckets in your classrooms, obviously. You want to avoid the whole mold issue, which we know other districts have gone through much to their dismay and, you know, disappointment. And it's too bad, but we just don't want to be in that situation. So, if it looks like we're being a little proactive on this, we are, but we're not being overly proactive. We're doing, I think, what is, what is prudent to protect the assets that we have in the building and the health and safety and the air quality and everything like that. And for the students.
Matt, before you leave the roofing.
Yes, sir.
I, I agree with your approach. I think it's fantastic that you've got a proactive approach and you've got this planned out into the future. I think that's, um, the right way to do it from a budgetary standpoint and also looking forward to making sure that you're getting ahead of it as much as you can. A little bit of a technical question in terms of our job here tonight. I, I agree with you with the middle school and, and the notion that it ought to be ranked urgent. However, the rest of the six-year plan probably falls under some other category by virtue of it being a six-year plan.
Absolutely.
Since our category uses necessary to describe things that are within three years and desirable between four and six years. Um, do you have a sense of what you would recommend for those others? In terms of what we ought to think about putting on them for a recommendation?
Oh, I think, um, I think definitely necessary. And as you get out to twenty-one, seriously, if you get out to twenty-one, twenty-two, it's going to be necessary by twenty-one, twenty-two.
No question, I think that they all may be urgent at the time that they come up in the batting order. But as you look out to something, you know, if you can look at it and say, well, we're going to do that in six years, um, it's hard to call that urgent. So, I was just trying to get a little guidance from you on what you thought, um, we ought to do for approach. And I'm sure that if you don't necessarily have a solution on top of your head, we'll figure it out, we'll come up with something.
No, I would definitely put down necessary for the rest of it because if, if it is, if it is not now, it definitely is going to be.
And I, I do think by the time they, they get up in the batting order, they'll be urgent, so.
Absolutely.
So, thank you for that.
Yeah, I was just gonna say after watching Assistant Town Manager McCallie talk about roads and putting them on a cycle. For us, that's what the roofs are, right? We have to continually sort of loop through and take care of the ones that have aged out. And this will be something that, that we'll be looking at in perpetuity.
I agree with you completely. I think that when, although asbestos doesn't sort of come around again, you guys did the same kind of a long-term plan with that. And you've got a bit of a paving plan going on here, which looks like it's sort of taking care of cycles. So, no question, I think you guys have the right approach to all this stuff.
Yeah, I'm having flashbacks to when I was on the budget committee in the eighties and nineties. I, you know, it was a, it was a constant, a, a constant issue. Constant presentations about roof repairs, roof replacements, paving issues, uh, you know, those sorts of things. It's just the nature of these buildings because they were, you know, like you said, uh, the way that the town has decided to, uh, deal with their space needs at the time. Necessitated some of the things that you're seeing here in terms of additions here and additions there, like the ninety-seven additions, which was. The school space committee, needs committee that I chaired, uh, that ye- that year. So, you were on that group too. So, you know, it was, uh, yeah, that was what we called the Bosnian Peace Talks. Twenty-eight members.
I suppose the, the only question I keep asking is why do we have flat roofs in this part of the world? Because everything I've learned in the twenty years I've been here is flat roofs are a problem with snow and what comes with snow.
If you have a roof that's carrying, covering an area that wide, if you give it a slope, that roof is going to be incredibly tall. So, it's the least amount of structure required to carry the roof over it if you're, if you're going for a pitch. Here, if you have, because you need something like a six to twelve, yeah, but then you have the valleys and it's going to pack up the snow in between them.
Well, to carry a span that large.
I realize you couldn't put a single span in that, but I, I, I mean, there, there's one bit of roofing which I always admire on the middle school. Where you come, it's very nice way by the main front door. It's sloped and it's got the little spikes to break the snow up so it doesn't kill anybody as it comes off. I don't know why we don't do more of it. I'm not saying every bit has to be pitched, but I do think we should seriously look particularly on Thornton's Ferry. Which as you rightly say, has been made in bits and pieces and, and probably the same as in, at Reed's Ferry. I don't know why we constantly don't, or why we can't think about putting pitches on some roofs to break it up.
I think in addition to Desiree's answer, the, the, the other bit of that is when you have a building that's basically a whole bunch of little blocks that have been assembled. Where's the roof line go? Where's the center line? Where's the pitch start and end and aim towards and how does it cover all these little funky block shapes in the middle?
Um, I do work out a lot of rooftop units, air conditioning and equipment like that.
You like them flat, don't you?
I love flat roofs, which is really difficult to put an HVAC unit on a pitched roof and then work on it.
I understand the problem.
They could make flat roofs that work, that hold up under the structure. These are just aren't them yet.
All right. Okay. I'll shut up. The question, the question's been asked for as long as I've lived in this town.
No, I get that.
I went to my first town meeting in, um.
All right.
Seventy-seven.
I, I commend you for planning these out in the future. I know that there's sort of this vision that some may have that you can get to the point with roofs or paving or something else where you've completed what needs to be completed. And you're in a period where you're not going to have to do any roof work or something like that. But the realization that that never happens and just sort of getting into, let's take a chunk of it each year and do that. Um, resolves the need for the debate and the peace talks that, uh, Council Mahan was talking about from the eighties. Just build it into the system that that's a, a reality of life, so.
Yeah, there, there, there is a, uh, portion, I was, I have an older sheet here that I want to take a look at real quick. If it'll come up nicely. Where if we're looking at roofing, oh geez, it didn't, it didn't flip over for whatever reason. I don't know why. Anyway, um, if I'm looking at my spreadsheet, when I get to twenty-four, twenty-five, there is a lull of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Ten years, maybe eleven years, twelve years, thirteen years, where there's no roofing project schedule, so.
You won't be presenting that though maybe, Matt?
Yeah.
That's good, that'll allow the dollars to go towards some other need that are going to come up those years.
Either that or the, the, the board could take a look at that and, um, say, okay, those are years we're not putting money into roofs. So, the, those are years that, uh, we could perhaps build up a capital reserve fund for the purpose of taking care of those larger expenses down the road. It makes no sense right now to create capital reserve funds because you're spending out the money as quickly as you're bringing it in. So, during those years where there's nothing going towards it, it'd be, it'd be a terrific time. It'd be my advice to whoever's going to be doing it to, to look at that and create and build up those capital reserve funds once again. So, we can kind of continue on and try and level things off, but.
The same way Mr. Chevanel will not be talking about roofs, I will not be, uh, involved in capital reserve fund discussions at that time.
Yeah, well, that's a, that's a, that's a bold prediction for a part of the country.
It's kind of like sad we're talking about roofs and end-of-life cycles and I'm talking about my own end-of-life cycle here.
You got a little bit of asbestos, I see.
Yes, we have, we have some asbestos, let me get back to that. And, uh, this is at the, uh, the high school. And, uh, we, we did skip a couple of years, but when we did, uh, we had asbestos, asbestos projects that through the bidding process. We were able to get a little bit more bang for our buck. And when that was, uh, given to us as an option, you can do an extra ten thousand square feet and still be within budget. We definitely went that way because the price isn't going, going, going to be going down, it's only going to be going up. So, now we kind of find ourselves at twenty-seven eighteen where we just moved this out, you know, because it's, it's something we feel we can move out. It's same process that Tom goes through with the roofs, he definitely goes through with the asbestos. And, uh, this is, and he will correct me on this if I don't say this properly. This is the remaining asbestos in the district that we now know of.
This, this is the end of it.
This is the end of the asbestos, the known asbestos. Now, if we get into a renovation and we take down a wall, there may be something in a wall that we don't know of. I know when we did the entrances to Reed's Ferry, you know, the secure airlock entrances to Reed's Ferry, Thornton's Ferry and the Upper Elementary School. Um, there was asbestos in the caulking compound that was used for the old doors. Who knew? I didn't know that, but we knew that. So, this is the ma- last of the major asbestos, but there may still be some around hither and yon as we, if we do some sort of renovations, but nothing to this magnitude.
This is floor tiles again?
Floor tiles, mastic, new floor tiles done.
Okay.
Finished.
How much space are we talking about? What's the area that we have left?
Uh, they should be around, we do around twenty, twenty-five thousand square feet.
Have you had a hazmat specialist look at this?
Oh, absolutely. We, uh, we contract with a company called RPF who comes in and does all of our testing and writes up basically the bid specification for us. And, uh, they manage the project and they make sure it's done properly and they do all the sign-offs for it, so it's something.
Would they close the school when they come in to do that?
To do the.
To remove the tile.
To remove the tile. Everything, this will be done in the summertime. This area will be cordoned off, plastic sheeting, hazmat suits, the whole ball of wax. Uh, will the whole school be closed off? No, some of it'll be open, but the areas that need to be closed off will be closed off, so.
How are you protecting the area right now while it's being used?
Um, we're just kind of looking at it and to see if there are any areas that are friable right now that's, uh, flaking or anything like that. And right now, there are none. There's just areas that are getting worn. So, it's going to be something that has to be done in the future before it gets to that point where it starts to, to spider crack and starts to come up.
Any kind of a sealant that you could put over it while you're using it?
We do seal the floors. Two, we're going to be doing it over Christmas break, probably I would say at least two, three times a year. We, we, we strip, we reseal, we burnish, we do whatever. There's, if you've ever been in any of our facilities after Christmas break or any kind of break, when you come back in, they, they absolutely glisten. So, uh, there is a definite sealer on there. That is it for asbestos. Now, we have the paving area or the, yeah, that is paving, isn't it? It was once paving. Um, that, that, that is the, that is the front of the, uh, the high school, uh, right now. Um, definitely needs to be resurfaced, I don't think there's any question there. The one, the shot on the left-hand side is the bus loop aside of the high school going around the back. You can see where we've done some patching there as that area kind of has been worn away by the bus traffic. To the left, there is a significant slope in that area. So, we'd be looking to build that up, uh, level it off, reclaim it and, uh, do a brand-new paving job going around the high school and the front of the high school.
Do you, um, coordinate or integrate your paving with the town's paving?
Absolutely. We do that every year. Kyle, um, well, Kyle Fox is, uh, Kyle is still here, right? Yeah, okay, good. Adam Jacobs left, I'm sorry, I got confused. Adam left. Yeah, we coordinate all this with Kyle, he's been fantastic as far as, you know, if you go out to bid and Continental is your winning bidder, we get the price that they get.
The only reason for raising it is I know that you're spending less than they are, but proportionally, it seems like they're getting a lot more mileage out of their expenditures. Maybe you need some underlay, uh, under the road rebuilding and that sort of thing to make it cost a little bit more. But they spend seven fifty, which is obviously three times what you're spending, but they got quite a long list of road miles that they're getting, uh, able to take care of with that.
Yeah. Well, we, we definitely like when we did Lions Road, we went down and we did a reclamation project in, in one area where we've really kind of ground down to nothing. And then build up kind of the subsurface thing.
Yeah, rebuilding the roads obviously a whole lot more than just, yeah.
Than just doing a grind and a, and a, and an overlay, so. Plus, there, there are areas when you have Continental do, uh, do a strip of road, it's nice, it's straight, it's easy, it's a lot faster. Our areas are a little bit more challenging with the jogs and the twists and the turns and whatever, especially if you're talking to a parking lot or a front entrance. So, perhaps it takes a little bit more time, but we are getting their, their rate as far as what they pay per cubic ton, however they pay for it, we get the same rate that they do. The next area we have, uh, is, uh, O'Gara Drive. I don't believe I have a, a slide for that, but that's something we want to take a look at from where the, uh, front entrance area ends. Kind of where the police parking is and everything like that, going all the way from O'Gara down to, uh, Babusik Lake Road. That's something we want to take a look at doing in seventeen eighteen.
When you do your repaving for all of these, do you plan to put in speed bumps on some of the roads?
No. We have not, we have not planned on putting speed bumps.
No, snowplows can get over a speed bump. They can and they do, but, um, new paving, especially on parts of O'Gara, is going to encourage people to drive a lot faster on it, so. And they already probably drive a little too fast, so.
Yeah, I wanted to ask about, uh, consideration for pedestrian travel along O'Gara Drive in particular. As part of the Town Center Master Plan, uh, which the Town Center Committee, which, uh, Chris served on for a year. And, um, we have a, uh, plan that was put together by the NRPC as looking at long range to build a sidewalk along O'Gara Drive. And make it a loop sidewalk, actually. There's other parts that are on town roads, but this particular one being on a school road, um, what considerations being given to that, if any?
Well, right now, it is, it is not in the plan for seventeen eighteen to be done. It's around an eighty thousand to a hundred thousand dollar add for a sidewalk. However, you know, there's a lot of variables that just came into play at our last meeting where we had a meeting of the school board and the town council. We learned that the town council is, um, what, what's the correct word, creating, uh?
So, we have, um, a lease agreement, uh, that, uh, put the tennis courts at the end of O'Gara Drive through a federal grant in the nineteen seventies. Um, on the parcel of property that, uh, contains the tennis courts, the basketball court, the skate park and the ice rink. Um, the town council has, um, gotten permission, uh, from the federal government to obsolete the tennis court. Uh, because of the, uh, poor condition that it is in and, uh, the lack of desire to throw any more money at it. As part of the, um, process, until the agreement expires, they're required to return that land to, um, passive recreation, open space. Essentially grass, maybe a park bench. Um, the lease is due to expire in two thousand eighteen. And so, at our joint meeting on Thursday, we were asked by the council, um, what do we want to do post-two thousand eighteen with that land? Do we want to take over the skate park and the ice rink? Um, do we want to enter some other agreement with the town, um, as it relates to the parcel? Um, and what we discussed at that meeting, um, is that the school board may actually have our planning and building committee look at potential uses for the property. As you know, we have a, a central office, consolidated central office project, uh, that was using one parcel of land. We don't know whether this parcel might be a potential, uh, lot for that. Uh, we have, um, other needs that the school buildings themselves, Mastrocola, Mastrocola Upper Elementary School and for that matter, the high school. May have for that property. Uh, we have been quite fortunate to have an agreement with Our Lady of Mercy, uh, to use their parking lot for staff parking, um, at the Upper Elementary School. But if that agreement were to go away, parking would be, parking already is a major issue down, uh, along the complex. Um, so, we need to look at what purpose we're going to give to that land and it may impact the design of a sidewalk. But I think that, you know, the estimates that Matt. Um, but I think that, you know, the estimates that Matt retrieved when we were working on the Town Center Committee and the desire to get those lots and looking at federal grants for that money, um, you know, came in at about a hundred thousand dollars. I think our threshold was a minimum of four hundred thousand, if I'm not mistaken, for, for submittal for uh, funding. Um, but I think that what we would wanna do is look at what potential use we may have for that property and therefore what design for uh, a sidewalk we'll, we'll put there.
Yeah, see, it all, it, it's all kind of dependent upon, I would hate to put a sidewalk in there without taking into account these other variables, these other unknowns, because then I'm taking a sidewalk that we do and I'm changing the curb cuts and I'm saw cutting items and I'm adding items and it's patchwork. I'd rather kind of look at the whole project as a big holistic project where, once we can get to a point of agreement, let's say, the high school team does not have tennis courts that they can use to practice on. They go to Wasserman Park. It would perhaps be nice to have tennis courts down in the, in that area that was useful for the high school team. Perhaps we could get uh, you know, a middle school team going, perhaps even an upper elementary school because of its pro- proximity to the upper elementary school. So perhaps, let's say if you look at that, tennis courts, associated parking, lighting, et cetera. And then you have the whole idea where you have um, the baseball field where the upper elementary school is. You have parking that happens along O'Gara Drive. They just line O'Gara Drive sometimes with a fence section where they shouldn't be and sometimes on the other side of the road. So perhaps we wanna look at creating some parking for that use also. And then Mr. Ortega brought up something that's, you know, been of concern to me in the back of my mind at some point in time is uh, you know, the Our Lady of Mercy Church. I mean, their intentions are terrific. They've been a tremendous partner over the years, but it's kind of hard to predict what the future will hold. If that card gets taken away from us and that parking is not available to us anymore, throughout whatever circumstance happens, um, that's a major blow to us because there is virtually no parking for the staff there. And uh, this would have to be something that perhaps we could look at as far as incorporating more parking in that area, so. But the whole news that we got recently of the town declaring that area obsolete, that opens up options for us that we had never really kind of thought about. And so we've now, now have to look at that whole sidewalk project more as a, a lot, a piece of a larger project that could really be a benefit to the district as a whole moving forward in the years, so. That's my long answer to what Mr. Ortega said in a few words, so, sorry about that.
No, I understand and to some extent, the part of O'Gara closer to the high school where the lots start, have sidewalks kind of on both sides-
Yes, they do.
Um, down there and using that space for the Fourth of July and seeing people kind of walk back and forth or just because my kids go to all the schools, all of them now.
Aren't you lucky?
Every time I go down there, there's somebody trying to walk down that road and, or park next to it and all of that stuff. Um, I, I get what you're saying about sort of trying to think about a, a overall plan that covers everything that you could have going on there. Um, I, I'm not sure I'm completely on board with the idea that the sidewalk is that difficult to manage in and out of that. Uh, uh, for example, with respect to the tennis courts, if you don't know what you're gonna do with that side, put sidewalk on the other side of the road, because nothing's gonna change on that side. Um, I mean, I think that there's ways that you could approach it and I think it would be important to do, especially around a school because obviously um, safe routes to school and people walking up and down there are, are an important thing. That said, um, I don't know that we sort of solved that issue or have that, hashed that completely out here. I just want to put a bug in your ear that it's, um, I think important um, as a parent of students in the school as well as part of the planning board, um, to think along those lines. Um, in particular, when you've got the parking lots and the sidewalks that start there, that sort of assumes that somehow somebody gets to the beginning of that sidewalk, which means they've walked across the first part of O'Gara to the grass, unless they got out of their car right there. Um, there's a, a lot of need for a sidewalk there.
Which is usually what I see during the uh, during school time and especially when, the winter time, when the lots have a tendency to shrink as far as the capacity of the spaces go. I see a lot of parking up in that area and a lot of people not walking from the beginning of O'Gara Drive up, but walking from the last place they left their car and hope it's still there at the end of the day and to the high school, so.
No question. Anyway, I've, I've said-
Nelson, I have one more bug I'd like to put in his ear.
Okay.
And that has to do with this, to keep in mind, there are grant programs out there that will help you. If you have a project, a paving project, there are grant projects that will help you with the sidewalk portion of it. Just the way we've done with the uh, Sahigan River Trail, we were able to leverage the town's money four times over to build a trail and system with, using federal money. So if you have some money that you're gonna put into the road for repaving, this is a time to do it and look at those kind of available sources of funds where it doesn't all come out of your budget and serves the town very well, even if it doesn't extend beyond the tennis courts, even if it just reaches the tennis courts.
Yeah.
Okay, so I, just put that in the planning, please.
Oh, thank you, absolutely, Mr. Dis-
And one other thing, there's been some changes, I don't know the extent of them, but there's been some changes in the federal transportation issues and as to, uh, they've loosened them up significantly in terms of sidewalks. As to how they have to be built and like now they will let you build them without curbs, so that they're not built up like that, okay?
Without granite curbs or without?
Without-
So you could have a three-foot strip of grass, the sidewalk?
There was a recent authorization of a brand-new national transportation and highway bill. I haven't had an opportunity to review it in any kind of detail, but what I've, I am hearing with Tom Cierig is that there's been a significant loosening on anything that's non-vehicular to try to encourage communities and states to put money into pedestrian bicycles and other non-motorized vehicles.
I, I was gonna say, is it sidewalks combined with bicycle trail type things?
I, again-
Okay, I don't, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but it's, you're just kind of getting my juices flowing here, so.
Yeah, no, it's important and I think Tom, you forwarded something to members of the board about that and it's um, it sort of started with this notion of the complete street, which i- is a cool concept, but when you map it out, it makes it about a hundred feet wide. Because you need, you know, the travel lanes in both directions and some grass in the middle and some grass on both sides and a sidewalk and a bike lane and it just, and you just keep adding and adding and adding and pretty soon, there's no room for the buildings anymore.
Now we know what we'll do with that property.
Yeah, it's just, so they, they've sort of come to some sense of reality on that and the fact that nobody's gonna build these things, so you might as well stop calling for them. It, it opens up some opportunities to look at things a little bit differently. I'm sure that anybody that you would hire to design these things for you is gonna be uh, very alert to the changes in the concept, so, ask them.
Yeah, we have a longstanding relationship with Steve Keach and Steve is uh, would definitely be up on anything that I would imagine, so.
Yeah, the RPC, the Regional, National Regional Planning Commission has a transportation person in there that can-
Is Matt Waken still the guy?
No.
No?
Well, Matt is still there, yes.
He is.
He's the bike guy.
All right, yeah, okay, yeah, you're right.
Okay, so I could touch base with him at some point in time.
Right, yeah. I mean, they've, they've got-
Propor-
He's very helpful.
Yes, he is.
They're a good place to start. And, and if you're gonna be able to leverage money, if you have other money that you're gonna invest in that area, you can leverage it.
Yeah.
You know, 'cause they always like it when you can come in and say, well, I'm willing to put in X amount of dollars into this and if you give me one-fourth of that, I can do this with it, right?
Excellent.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
What's next on the list?
What's next? Uh, just, just a little bit on the um, MES entrance and um, JMU, JMU's uh, office parking area. This is the entrance to the Smith Gym. It's also where MES um, visitors park. Uh, this is an area where we wanna do, we wanna kind of connect these two with the item beneath it, the hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the drainage. You can see virtually, there's, there's very little drainage there. There's lots of cracking in the pavement. Uh, we want to definitely do a total reclamation of all this, uh, sort out all the drainage underneath because there are several, I've, I've dug up a portion of that and we've stood looking at pipe going, gee, wonder where that goes. And so we've had to kind of do some testing and whatnot because it's not a lot of plans that go back to like nineteen forty-something. Um, same thing with um, the next portion. This area over here is the portion that is uh, right adjacent to the new entrance to the upper elementary school, which is right next to, on the left, school street, which when you go a little bit further, is the church parking lot. So that area is an area we'd wanna take a look at and uh, do some drainage and some, take care of some of the fractured pavements that's there also.
It may be a part of what you have in mind with drainage and I know that those parking lots are small and compact and you don't have enough parking, but I think with some creativity, you actually do have some space there if somebody wanted to break up all of that impervious surface with maybe something live and grass-like or, of tree or something that massively improves the, the appearance of the building with just a little bit of, just a little bit of landscape, something that breaks it up. Paving the, the site from one end to the other at that, at that back entrance to, or the front entrance to Mastrocola is sort of what I think of as the back end of the building.
It is rather stark looking, isn't it?
And, and as tight as those parking lots are, yes, probably still, if you had somebody that was uh, sharpening their pencil and, and a smart cookie, you could probably find a room for a little bit of something that changes that view.
Couple of shrubs at least.
I have, Mr. Chairman, I have to disagree with you. I mean, that parking area is, is pre- compressed to, to breaking point at school dismissal times and in fact, in the morning even as well. You've gotta have the teachers out there trying to control cars unloading their kids and as well as the buses.
So design it better. Get somebody to do it better.
There isn't a square acre, inch of space that, that's, that's not being used by people.
Well, not the way it's used now. I'm saying do it better.
I think we can take that under advisement.
Take it, yeah, yeah. Yeah, definitely take it under advisement and if there is a way to put uh, see, there's, there's a couple of issues at play. Mr. Mil- Mr. Milnes really makes a point. You make a good point too. To put some sort of impervious service to allow drainage to go through. I mean, I, I know that's, that's the way things are going.
You've got plenty of impervious now, you need pervious.
Plenty of impervious. You wanna keep the water on the site. You don't want it spilling off the site. You wanna do your drainage calculations correctly.
But if I might barge into something you've been saying, or Chris Ortega has also said it, before you go mad on that area, you really wanna ensure that the church is gonna give you long-term use of that car park. Because if, if they pull the plug on you tomorrow, I mean, I do not know what you'd do. It would be a disaster. You'd almost have to bring everybody in through the MES entrance. So I think you really wanna sit down with a, with a pope or whoever and get a, you know, a hard copy that, that keeps you going, at least for the next, for the, for the life of that paving.
If that's what will get me an audience with him, I will do that.
Thank you.
I will share a plane ticket with you to the, to Rome if you care to.
Well, at least you get a holiday in Rome.
Yes, that's right.
Thank you for putting up with our crazy talk.
You know, there's always some great ideas coming out of this committee and, and I, I just like the whole tenor of it because you do guys, you guys act in a very collegial manner and are very respectful and a little bit of humor is, is just, just a bonus, so I, I just, I just enjoy myself here immensely, so.
Can't tell whether that was sarcasm or not, but-
No, it wasn't sarcasm, I'm being serious. If I'm sarcastic, you're gonna know it, believe me.
Well, we, we do love you guys and even if we give you a bad time once in a while, it's all in the-
Oh, that's okay. It's part of the job. It's what we get paid for, yeah.
Along those lines, if you need a copy of the agreement between the school and the church and the town, there are three parties to that agreement.
Yeah, I, we, we have it. I have it scanned on my computer, so I, I have that. This is uh, an item we've been talking about for a bit. Uh, it's put off till two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. Uh, we have discussed this. Uh, it's the uh, central office project. Uh, we're still, we're holding it to one point nine million right now. That's, that includes, here's the, basically the location, this area here, um, that we're looking at. It's an acre of land that back in nineteen ninety-nine, the town took for taxes and probably around four years ago, we realized that and we asked if we could have it and they made it happen and we transferred the, the ownership from the town to the school district for the sum of one dollar. So it was very gracious of them and we, we thanked them immensely because it was basically landlocked by a school district property. So this is a nice flat piece of land right at the end of the high school parking lot. I wouldn't say the site doesn't present any challenges, but as far as construction goes, if the soil is anything like the rest of the soil in that area, it's very sandy and it's very easy, easy digging and I wouldn't imagine there'd be much ledge at all involved. Uh, we have gas lines that are now a heck of a lot closer than they used to be. The only challenge would be hooking up to the sanitary source system, which would be coming around Brentwood, splitting between special services and that building and hooking up in front of uh, the old central office. This price does include uh, the removal and the raising of both central office and special services and the creation of additional parking, so it's a complete build the building, turn key, uh, flick the light switch and have the uh, the parking areas available where special services and central offices. Yes, ma'am?
So I believe last year you, well, this is the third time it's been on the agenda? This, this project, but it was the, the first time was, it was the emergency, like, oh man, this thing's flooding the central services, I believe. They had the big bad weather events and there was-
Sandy took the roof off and we had rain inside, yes.
So, so you guys, we put it on urgent, fix that and the next year, you guys said, well, we, we got some other stuff we're kind of working on and we recognize that it's important, but we need to evaluate our situation, so you were gonna do a study. Is this the result of that study? Is, am I cor- correcting that?
I thought I remember the voters being the ones that put the brakes on the project for you.
So, so we, we put it on the ballot. Um, we received a majority vote, but not the um,
Supermajority.
The supermajority that was needed to bond the project. Um, we did contract uh, over the last year with a group called Nezdeck um, to do a space needs study uh, for the entire district, um, looking at all of our schools and how much space is being used and in particular, whether we could, excuse me, locate central office and SAU, um, central office, SAU and special services in any of those buildings and, and we could not. The benefit of the study is we have um, very good metrics now in terms of space capacity and, and uh, um, utilization rates and really, you know, how to, how to manage that space. Um, that's the s- study of which we speak. Um, what you'll notice is this slide actually has uh, dates on it that are further out in the future than are represented here and that's because um, the iterations that we've gone through, I, I didn't know if you noticed, um, the iterations that we've gone through with the capital improvement plan, going to our planning and building committee first, then to the school board. Administration had actually shifted this out somewhat um, to that twenty twenty-one and uh, I can't recall whether it was planning and building or us who uh, had it wind up here in, in twenty seventeen, eighteen, but uh, between the two of us, that's where, that's where it wound up and, and ultimately where it belongs.
Thanks for the explanation of that. Um, when, the study that you're talking about, is that something that's available?
Yes.
Okay. I would love to have a copy of it, not related to judging this, but just I'm curious to see how all that study-
Yeah, it's a very good study, yeah.
I'm, I'm not sure if we have that posted online, but if we don't, we probably should, so we can definitely put that online and um,
Yeah, that'd be great. I'd look for it. That'd be terrific. Um, Lynda, have a question?
I'm, uh, yes. I'm very familiar with those buildings and I totally agree with bringing this further, closer. My question is, um, has there been consideration for extending the new wing of the high school to incorporate special needs and SAU in that? So that you're tapping onto an existing building and where you're in an existing building, you could have facilities that could be used by either possibly making them more- And where you're in an existing building, you could have facilities that could be used by either possibly making them more, more usable.
Yeah. Again, part of the Nezdeck study was to look across the district for areas that could be used.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not talking about existing space.
Yeah.
But rather than building a.
Oh, adding on to the high school.
Rather than building a brand-new freestanding building to take that same space and just attach it to the new wing of the high school, essentially where the superintendent's office is now.
Yeah, you're talking where the two thousand additions were, were done, the, the, the three-story portion.
Yes.
Yeah.
Just extending that, I think you're, you would be more cost-effective doing that. And I think you'd be, have your space more usable.
You'd have to have, because of the footprint and the, do you wanna?
I, I just, I, I can't say with any certainty that it would be less expensive, but I, I, I don't know.
Well, I'm thinking if you have conference rooms in both, both facilities, that they can be used by each, whereas if you have a freestanding building, the rooms in one are not as easily usable by the other, going both ways. So you might have better utilization of the space if you're connected.
Sharing conference rooms in the high school with what would be central office, special services.
Well, whether it's conference rooms or whatever happens to be common between them.
Whether it's existing or whether it's new ones, but if you, if you are attached to the building,
Right.
then if there is space in there, it's easily shareable if there's a need and there's a vacancy, so.
Well, the thing is, when, when you look at the back end of the three-story addition, there's a three-story stairwell right at the end. And those are all classrooms, science classrooms, and I believe one of the level is social studies up at the top.
I, I'm not asking for a critique tonight.
I'm not, I'm not giving you a critique.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
It could be, it could be a consideration, yes.
That's all I'm saying.
I think it should be because I would have thought from an engineering point of view, it's gonna be a lot cheaper to connect up to the drainage that's already there rather than having to blast new drainage for your standalone building. I mean, I've.
Just, just consider it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that it's cheaper or more expensive either. I'm, I wouldn't necessarily assume that it is, cause I've seen, not with schools, but with hospital projects where renovations cost more than starting on a clean piece of land. So I, I don't know that it's cheaper, but we offered up as an idea to, you know, run, run by the people who do solve these problems and answer these questions, see what they think.
We'll put it right next to the strawberry for consideration.
It was a, it was a brief consideration by the high school space needs committee, which I also chair.
Yes.
And I can't remember why we didn't move with it, but.
I think it was a cost factor at the time. But, but that was.
Hundred years ago.
In discussion when we were talking about expanding that wing the way we were, that it could continue to house future needs.
It's always a cost factor, the one constant, right?
Well, yeah, you, you, you're correct, cause when, when that addition was first done in two thousand, it was six million dollars, a little bit less.
Right.
And the thought at the time to add administrative space to an educational issue that needed to get solved would definitely sink it as far as the vote goes. So that's why it was taken out.
Yeah, it was, it was also perceived by some as empire building on part of the administration. So, you know, I mean, it, I mean, all the, the typical, all the typical.
But the consideration was there when that wing was built, by the space needs committee.
Yeah, I remember having a conversation with Jim O'Neill years ago, saying that, you know, he, he wished at the time, because the construction was going on, that a little more consideration would have been given to that, but.
I, I think Tom's right. I think it would have gone down in flames if you'd done it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But.
That's what Jim, that's what Jim said too.
But the thought was there.
Yeah, the thought was there.
Not nearly as, not nearly as, how should I say this? For lack of a better word, the mood of the community.
The tenor of the community was a tad different.
Exactly. It was just, that was, just wasn't.
It wasn't gonna happen.
Those linkages weren't, weren't things that were easily convincing.
And, and what I will say is that the one thing that's common between that administration and this administration, when looking at projects like this, they will defer administration projects over projects like the ones that we're talking about that are going to benefit students. And so in the case of the high school extension, I, I bet you that the, the calculus was, I would rather see the classrooms get built to ensure a, a better education for the students than worry about central office. And I think that holds true today.
Yeah, and you have to remember at that, that particular point in time, the enrollments in the high school were edging up to like eighteen hundred kids. That was a lot of kids in that high school. And when they built that three-story addition, it was like, it was just, it just got filled completely immediately, you know, because, you know, it had the better science rooms. It had everything like that. So that was, that was a really peak as far as enrollments go at that point in time. So it was, I could see the thinking at the time that it's imperative to get this done. And if we have to sacrifice this and have it looked short-sighted in the end, let it be, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I, but generally speaking, regardless of what the solution is for what you do in the future, I agree wholeheartedly and a hundred percent that the two buildings you're using today are worn out and use their extensive, their, their useful life and, and well overdue for replacing or retiring or bulldozing or whatever you wanna call it.
They do have a certain homey characteristic to them.
Well, it's how they were built.
It's how they were built, yes.
Enjoy having your desk under a stairwell.
Yeah. Or, or Marge being in the master bedroom suite. That's always nice.
Did you have the en suite?
The en, the en suite is the men's room in the hallway. I don't think she refers to it as the en suite. I think she refers to it as a distraction. Anyway, let's not go there. The ne- the next item we have on the agenda is the Merrimack High School track. We talked about that last year too. We have classified this, the board has classified this as urgent. We're at the point right now where we put a certain sum of money, I believe an extra fifteen thousand, twenty thousand dollars in the budget to do repairs on this track. It's a surface, it's an asphalt base, crushed stone underneath, et cetera. But the, the rubberized compound on top, which is black, is lifting, is separating, is delaminating. We have cut out big sections of it, put patching on it, glued it. It is done as far as being patched. The company Main Track and Field, who does a lot of these all over the country, in fact, they've, they've, they did the artificial surface for the New England Patriots over a week because Mr. Kraft wanted it done. They do a lot of the major NFL teams and they're, they're excellent company. And they do tracks as well. They will not patch it next year. They're finished. Because they don't want to have the liability associated with doing the patching work. So if we, it's, it's almost to the point where it's imperative, it's a fait accompli, that, that, that it really kind of has to get done in order to main, maintain the safety. Now, while we're doing that, we might as well bring this up to NHIAA Protocol and Rules by having an eight-lane straightaway. I guess in talking with the athletic director, when you have track meets and you have these heats that are hundred-meter dashes, you run them in groups of eight. Right now, we have to run them in groups of six, do this permutation of numbers. I don't quite know, know how they get to that. But you need to run them in groups of eight. And this is what we would do. We would put on two more lanes to the straight. We build a retaining wall right now, which we kind of need anyway, because of the slope of the land, the, the washouts occurring and the gravel and the sand and whatnot, is not being held back by the grass that's there. And it's kind of bleeding out onto the track surface anyway. So we need a, we need a good retaining wall. We need a drainage pipe that runs the length of that whole area before you get to the track. And you need an appropriate, you know, fencing and safety areas there too. So for four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, you would get a brand-new track with an eight-lane straightaway and a nice retaining wall and have everything.
And drainage.
And drainage that's proper and appropriate for the track.
Can I summarize in saying that if you don't do it, you won't be able to run track meets at Merrimack?
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Which is why we marked it as urgent, in particular the fact that the vendor refuses to patch it any further.
Yeah, they put it in writing. It's, it's like, it's, you know.
It was the fact that you couldn't hold track meets, I think is important for us to know.
Yes.
Yeah, correct. So then if we could stay right on here, I don't know if you can, there's the new set of bleachers that, when I talk about new set of bleachers, the ones towards the top of the screen that were built probably in around two thousand two, two thousand three perhaps. Then we have the older set of bleachers that were built way before I got here. And.
The visitor.
The visi- the visitor, yeah, the visitor bleachers. They're basically kind of, you know, the new bleachers that we have, they're on, they're on cement piers, you know, yay big across, sunk into the ground, four feet down into the frost line, everything bolted down. These are resting on the ground, basically. There's a slope of ground, there's some cement blocks, they rest on there and that's where they're at. There's no railings, there's no ADA accessibility. We've done all we can to, to make them safe, repairable. We've done that too. But now it's kind of time to, to change those out. So that would be something that we'd be looking at, the bleachers by the track, to kind of recreate what we currently have. Have the appropriate ramps, have the appropriate handrails. I don't know about anybody here, but when you're going down, when you're traversing from the top step down to the bottom step of bleachers and you're holding on to people's shoulders to catch your balance, as opposed to going out to a row or an aisle where you have handrails, it's much more comforting for me to go to a row where there's a handrail one I can grab on to and, and just make my way down as opposed to, you know, relying on the shoulders of the, of others to, to, to help me with my, you know, balance and whatnot. So that's basically what we'd be looking at in replacing those bleachers. That would be in seventeen eighteen, it's three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I do not have a picture of them, but I have the bleachers in the Smith Gym. They're the old wooden bleachers. They are very heavy. They are to the point where, you know, as you pull them out and you push them in, there's a lot of metal fatigue back and forth with the joints, the way they hinge back and forth. We've been doing spot welding on them. We've been keeping up with them. But much like the bleachers we have in the high, had in the high school that we replaced in the gym, it's time to replace those. Those are the original to the Smith Gym, so they're thirty some odd, they're what? Excuse me?
It's been a long time.
It's been a long time. It's been a long time. And like I said, the underneath skeletal portion that is metal, that is flexed back and forth and back and forth and back and forth, is now getting to the point where, you know, how many welds do you do? Okay, you did eighty to a hundred. Okay, next year you're gonna do two hundred. Next year you're gonna do three hundred. It's just to the point where they need to be replaced with something modern. And again, there's no ADA accessibility on those bleachers. They're old school. They're slabs of heavy wood material. They'd be replaced by a composite-type material with the proper railing and the proper aisles and the proper handrails going down and proper ADA areas also. So that'd be something we'd be looking at doing at seventeen eighteen. If there's any questions on those.
Do they collapse the same way the old ones did?
Yep. They would go straight up against the wall. Yep, that's correct. You can, you can get different colored seats to make a design in them if you, if you want to. Sometimes that works out well, sometimes it doesn't, so you're better off just going with the same color. We tried that at the middle school and I had a big M this big and I had on a little M like this and an S and it's just like, okay, give me all blue. That's it. That's all I wanna do. And get rid of the gray ones. So anyway, sometimes it works out, sometimes it doesn't. The next item we have is something we've been talking about for quite some time. That's really a discussion that's on, discussion that's ongoing. Every year, there's new information about artificial surfaces versus non-artificial surfaces. The advantage of an artificial surface for a field is utilization. You get much more utilization. You can use it earlier in the year. You can use it later in the year. Drainage, you have the proper drainage done. It rains, you don't have to worry about mud. The, the thing wicks right out and you're ready to go. Shortfalls, you know, there's been talk recently of, and not so recently, about the material uses, the base material that has to be groomed into the, the blades of synthetic turf being carcinogen. You know, you can see it if you watch some of the pro football games where people dive and they, they, the black pellets fly up in the air. You know, that's what we're talking about. So this is something that is on the CIP correctly, currently for eighteen nineteen. And it's a subject of the vigorous discussion in the planning and building, in the school district planning and building community and that committee, that elected body that serves at the pleasure of the school board and the charge of the school board. And we'll see where that one goes. I don't know if you have anything more to add to that.
Yeah, I thi- I, I think that the concept is a reaction, and I heard Mr. McCallie mention this earlier as well. And he had athletic fields out there on the capital improvement plan for the town as well as a reaction to the Fields Needs Study that was done probably about five years ago. I think it was chaired by Tim Tenhae, which showed that we're lacking in terms of, in particular, in terms of rectangular fields in town. And the thought was if the high school field were on a synthetic surface, not prone to wear and tear, that we could get potentially more use out of it. And so that's what really generated this discussion. Part of what I think we need to look at in terms of a project like this is that the estimates for the life of a field being about ten to maybe fifteen years before it needs to be replaced, carry with it some significant ongoing costs, right? The maintenance is relatively simple, right? There's a grooming machine that reseeds those, depending upon your perspective, carcinogenic or non-carcinogenic, black rubber pellets. And that's the extent of grooming of one of these fields. But I think longer term, right, what we need to be committed to is, not unlike roofs, some sort of ten or fifteen-year cycle, right, for replacement. So it's not insignificant. And maybe there are opportunities, you know, we talked about federal funding earlier, maybe there are opportunities in terms of, you know, business sponsorship or, or partnerships, things along those lines. And so the, the reason I think there's a lot of discussion is about how best to go forward with something like this and, and whether or not to commit to it. Thank you for that. What's next?
Windows?
Yeah.
Okay. This is a new item on the CIP, which is window replacement at the high school. When we did the addition in two thousand and some renovations within, inside the building, we create, we built a weight room. We redid the locker room, the trainer, trainer's room, et cetera. We also replaced the windows in the front of the building. They used to be aluminum frames, double panes that were broken as far as their. They used to be aluminum frames, double panes that were broken as far as their seals. They had that nice film that you see when a double pane wing, window has lost its insulation property and we did replace those. So the front of the high school is newer, newer windows that still function properly. They, they function very well. And so we're looking at starting a program at the high school and perhaps doing a survey of some of the other school buildings to look at the eventual replacement of windows. The windows that we've kind of chosen right now are ones such that they do not secure properly. So to lock them in the evening, we use the old piece of hickory stick, I guess, I say, and put it in between where the window would swing open, it goes right in that little slot. So they don't, they don't lock anymore, but that piece of wood keeps them locked. And they have the insulation, it's not argon gas, it's not, I don't even know what it is. But the insulation between the two panes of glass is, is not there anymore. And you can see the hazing, you know, the condensation in between, so there's a lot of heat loss going off there. So it's something we wanna get started, we wanna kind of put in front of you to say, we need to look at this. I think I have sixteen seventeen on that sheet, I should amend that to seventeen eighteen, that's, that's my fault. But it's on the.
He says seventeen eighteen on our sheet.
Yeah, it says seventeen eighteen on the CIP, on my, on my PowerPoint, it says sixteen seventeen. I missed, I missed that one.
I think that was another adjustment between either planning and building or the school.
Or the school board, yeah, that's correct. So we're talking initially for a hundred and forty thousand, fifty-two windows that we'd be starting to look at and that would be in the year seventeen eighteen as a starting point to begin with. Then, lastly, our focus on technology. We have a set amount put aside every single year for technologically, technological improvements in the building. We wanna continue the initiative that we started a few years ago with putting LCD projectors in each, each classroom, much as what you see right here. We used to rely on the television sets as presentation systems, but for a classroom purpose, they don't really serve the purpose because the teacher can't display a big enough visual so kids can read it, understand it, look at it, whatever. So we're going through and making sure that it's a goal of ours to have one of these in each classroom. In college campuses across the country, this is standard issue to have. We wanna complete the Wi-Fi saturation. We've made great strides in this in the past few years by leveraging the decrease in the cost of bandwidth with increasing our bandwidth as we go. So as the price goes down, we add more bandwidth, which is always important. We're looking at still upgrading our network and our server environments. Just recently, I can give you, for instance, the server that takes care of all our financials, our personnel records, our budget development worksheets, needs an upgrade. And the server that it currently resides on is not able to accept that upgrade. So we're in the process of purchasing a brand-new server for that purpose. We're gonna be getting it ready probably by Thursday of this week so we can hit the upgrade deadline of Friday so we can continue on. And we need that upgrade primarily because that upgrade's gonna include a lot of important information on the Affordable Healthcare Act and stuff that we need to act upon as far as how we generate our ten ninety-five documents for everybody and all their tax returns and everything like that. So that's, that's an example of a server upgrade that needs to, needs to be done. We also wanna continue on the replacement cycle to shorten that down. It's amazing, we, we, we had a computer replacement cycle of ten years, which is kind of amazing in and of itself. Because I don't think myself I've ever worked on a computer that's been ten years and never got it to do what I wanted it to do properly. We wanna decrease that down to five or six, which we are definitely getting there. We're making a lot of strides. The cost of hardware's going down, we're making really good informed decisions, we're doing leasing where it makes sense and we're doing purchasing where it makes sense, too. We also want to improve the technology layout and access for students, relocation of labs, perhaps, putting in more cabling and designing instructional technology spaces. Thornton's Ferry Library, we had some money recently from the trustees to do a whole renovation on that. We're real excited about that. Right next door to the library, there is a computer lab that's been created together that we've been able to pull together machines from other areas and actually create a separate computer lab that used to be an instructional space right near the library. So if you're in the library and you bring in a class and you're a classroom teacher, there's a designated computer lab that you can go into and bring them there and the teacher can work with the integration specialist, the librarian there in charge, and they can assist them in culling out the computer resources that they need and, and where they need to go as far as good, reliable reference materials, et cetera, and help kids with their projects and everything like that. So we, we've, we've come, we've come a long way and I'm really, I'm really satisfied with where we are, where we're going and the, the commitment the board has made to keeping this an ongoing issue as opposed to viewing it as a one-time expense and then you just kind of leave it alone for five years. You can't do that now. So that is all I have on the capital improvement plan.
Thank you for walking through the technology piece and I certainly agree with you and, and your board in their position that it's gotta be sort of an ongoing thing. Certainly not any sort of expert on technology and the systems that you need to have. But the one thing that you mentioned with the LCDs in the classroom or the projectors in the classroom, I've had the chance to teach some classes at NHTI and the LCDs are actually sort of on the backside of the technology curve and some of the things that they have now are certainly much, much better and have a whole bunch more features. But I just want you to take a careful look at that so that you don't buy something that's obsolete the day that it's installed. They have some of these, you know, smart screens with tools where you're walking up to the wall and hitting the links and.
We have those.
Doing that sort of thing, so.
Yeah, we have those in targeted areas and definitely we're gonna look as we, you know, flesh this out and just, just go ahead to, to go ahead and use those. But I have seen those in use, we have them in the library, we have them in definitely definite spaces.
Yeah, they're really cool things.
The interactivity of them, especially when, when you're dealing, we, we had a little demonstration a while back where each, each child, this is on an elementary school level, where they can actually answer questions by having little buttons. And those little buttons are assigned to a student so the teacher knows exactly who has what button. So once they're done with, you know, answering the questions and doing the project and whatever, on the teacher's side, which the students don't see, there's an instant assessment of where the kids are at. And that's powerful stuff. And so that, that's definitely what we wanna look at in the future.
I don't even know all the extent of it, I just know that there's some really cool gizmos out there for that stuff.
Document cameras, too, are really, really hot right now. You know, but the smart boards definitely, and you could put them anywhere virtually. It used to be, it used to be, you used to have a big screen and it had to be, now you just have this.
They put them everywhere and NHTI has them integrated with a series of Microsoft Surface tablets that the students all have and everybody can sort of have an opportunity to take control over the board for whatever part of the project is theirs. And I, I'm sure I'm preaching to the choir, but there's all sorts of really cool things that are out there other than just a projector that connects to a computer with a wire.
But, but I think it's, it's also fair to say that, that even a, a simple projector can be extremely powerful in, especially in the absence of one. I, I had the opportunity about a year or so ago to actually take a, a week's worth of time, actually more than a week, and spend a day at each school in the district. And while I was in the high school, I sat in on a math class and the teacher had, from her iPad, it was a projector hooked up to an Apple TV, right, which allows you to share your iPad screen. And she was teaching a lesson on velocity and in particular, velocity through a turn. And she put on the board two points in a circle, one inner more and one outer and she was asking which one has the higher velocity. But rather than asking the class, she had an app that allowed the kids on their phones to submit a, a response to a survey, right, link, which she was able to project and show the results. Now, the good news was, as Mr. Chevanel points out, she had an instant assessment of where the class was. The bad news was, the answers were about fifty-fifty, right, which meant there was more work to do in terms of the lesson. But I, I, I mean, it's really powerful what teachers are doing with technology and the tools that they're given. We often ask at, at the board's table, I, I appreciate what you said about our commitment to technology. The starting point that we had, where most of the computers in the district were at least ten years old, I actually don't agree that even getting to six is the right schedule. Computers are, you know, getting themselves obsoleted within three years or less. But that said, we continually ask Ms. Rose, our, our Director of Technology, Library and Media Services, you know, should we be doing more? And, and actually, there is a point of, of capacity to take on new technology and, and how to integrate it into curriculum. And so what we think we've struck is the right level of funding there. But, you know, from the board's perspective, we recognize that, you know, there's a lot more that can be done.
No question, it's terrific. Separate from the capital expense of buying the stuff, how much are you spending on teaching people what to do with it and how to use it? Because that's the thing that I find really challenging at NHTI is I don't know what to, I don't know how to use this thing. They show me this stuff and they do a demonstration and I think, well, what can I do with it in my classroom? I don't know.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot of professional development that goes on, especially with the, the educational technology integration specialist. It's a long-term for the computer teachers in the, the buildings who do a lot of work with technology integration, teaching the teachers how to use the apps, teaching them how to use the hardware. You can buy all the hardware and the apps and the whistles and the whatever the heck you call them. But if you don't know how to use it, then it, it's, it's just a, it's just a brick sitting on a desk.
Yeah, no question. Does each teacher sort of have some control over whether they choose to use it or choose to do it the old way? Or is there some drive to make sure that people are getting on it?
I, I don't think there's any, anybody twisting anybody's arm. I think if any arms are getting twisted, it's ours in the direction of, we want more, teach us.
It, it is. And, and I think Ms. Rose, in, in terms of the way that things were deployed initially, took a, a very smart approach and identified early adopters, people who were ready to integrate the technology in their classrooms. And what has happened is over time, their peers are seeing what they're doing with it and how they can actually extend learning opportunities through technology and are now asking for it, right? And so has, in doing so, has created demand for the technology. And so in that regard, it's actually been quite helpful because you're not dumping something on someone's desk and saying, okay, use this, right? If all you have is a hammer, everything looks like a nail. But rather instead, they're seeing the effective use of the technology within a classroom and have their own ideas for how to use it and are coming forward and asking for it, which I think is fantastic and I think was masterful on, on her part.
That's, that's good to hear and, and thank you for sharing it. I sort of imagine that that's how the technology would be adopted is that, I don't know, some percentage of it are sort of the early cutting edge and then at some point, there's sort of the, the pack comes along and catches up. But is someone making sure that there's not ten or twenty percent of the teachers on the trailing edge that just won't move it?
Absolutely. It, it's, it's part, it's part of the, the whole evaluation model that's being put forward as far as utilization of technology and how facile you are with it and do you incorporate it into your classrooms, et cetera. It's one, it's one piece of many, but it is in there, so it is being addressed.
Thank you for indulging the questions. I know it isn't strictly related to the capital improvement plan since that's not capital for that training, but at the same time, spending capital on technology doesn't work if nobody's using it. So it does sort of relate back a little bit. Thank you for the questions. Does anybody else have questions about either the technology or anything else that they've presented in there? Jeff?
I assume you have an IT organization that manages all these systems that you're buying.
We have IT, we have a network administrator, we have Nancy Rose, who's the Director of Technology and Library Media Services. We have two computer technicians and a computer software manager.
That sounds very light for this many, for this many schools, extraordinarily light.
It is.
It is.
I probably have that many people in my firm of seventy people and you've got ten times that.
Can I also assume that their security capabilities are built in this, so your sensitive information is protected?
Oh, without a doubt, with, without a doubt. Now, everything, the firewall, we, we, I'm not getting into particulars, but we have, we have firewalls in place, we definitely have off-site backups going on. So every night, let's say, you know, I'm talking about my student information system. Every night, the student information system company comes in, you know, knocks on the door, said, hello, let me in. Our student information says, yes, you are who you say you are. They let them in, they take an exact copy of what we have and they take it and they download it and they put it in a server wherever that server location is, is located in the United States. And same thing with our, our fund accounting system, same thing with our HR system, same thing with our library automation system, a lot of that's going on. So the security is, is, is very good and the backups are key to, to anything and they're all being done onsite and offsite, too.
Thank you for that. Other questions or comments? No, thank you. From a technology standpoint, when I go to my kid's basketball game, if my phone would work better in the gym, that'd be perfect.
I don't know how you're gonna fix that. If you don't have anything else that you wanna share with us, you're certainly welcome to hear, to stay while we deliberate. But if you're not interested in doing that, we don't require that you do or command your presence. But thank you so much for the presentation and.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Yeah, thank you. I, I always appreciate, appreciate my time here. It's something that I always go away with, learning something. And I'm always better for being here in front of your, in your, in your company and listening to what you have to say and what you have to offer.
We learn a ton from you guys, too. And I know that your planning process is also, you know, broadcast over the Merrimack TV and people get a chance to see it, but this is one more chance for them to hear and see and have questions asked and know what's coming down the pipe from the planning for the, all of this stuff, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so let's, do you wanna deal with the school while it's fresh on the mind? Let's address that, okay. Typically, the way that we've approached these is to sort of go down the list and select a priority level and then, once we have the whole thing framed up, we vote on the whole slate of them. Although there's no requirement that we do it that way, we could always carve out each, any particular single one if it needs some special treatment.
For, for purposes of preparing the minutes, it certainly is easier if we go a consensus model through each item and then one single motion at the end. Just to remind everybody, I know I sent an email out earlier in the week with the priorities, standards. I'll just go through them really quickly to remind everyone. Priority one is urgent, cannot be delayed, needed immediately for health and safety. Priority two is necessary, needed within three years to maintain basic level. Priority two is necessary, needed within three years to maintain basic level and quality of community services. Priority three is desirable, needed within four to six years to improve quality or level of service. Priority four is deferable, uh, can be placed on hold af- until after the six-year CIP period, but supports community development goals. Uh, Priority five is premature, needing more research, planning and coordination. And then lastly, Priority six is inconsistent, contrary to land use planning or community development goals. So those are the six priorities that, uh, we assign to each of these projects and I would certainly encourage the consensus approach, uh, I think it's worked well in the past couple of years.
Thanks, Tim, and if anybody, as we go through these, sort of loses their place in what those categories are, we'll just talk our way through it and go, go over them again so that we know what they are. Um, I think that the school, both the school and the town, um, took the steps of making some suggestions for how they thought the, the priority might go using the same, um, criteria. So with that, let's, uh, talk about a consensus on the first item on the school boards, uh, program, which is their HVAC equipment at Merrimack High School. They've, they've, they've identified it as being necessary, Desiree.
I agree.
I agree.
I tend to agree. Anybody disagree with the idea that it's necessary? Okay, the next.
Is it not urgent?
Well, I was gonna say, it's, it's nearly urgent.
It was urgent. It's gonna be done sometime in the next six or eight months.
Yeah, but.
I, I mean, I, I, I have no problem going with what they said, but it just seemed like it fit in the urgent.
I think that it certainly could be a situation that's urgent if their system fails. But if their system doesn't fail, whether it can be done in a little bit of a planning, and they, they seem to think that it was, which is why they selected necessary in their plan. Their next item is roofing and, uh, I think their middle school with their ten thousand, uh, tw- two thousand linear feet of patches on the roof are certainly qualifies as urgent. As I discussed while they were here, I think as you, as they start to plan things out for future years, it's hard to call it urgent two or three or four years down. And so I would categorize the rest of them as being necessary. Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
Necessary for the, the next two years and then desirable for the, the last three, using the, the criteria of two to three years and four to six.
Urgent, necessary, necessary, desirable, desirable, desirable.
Right.
Excuse me, I guess I didn't understand, the, I thought the, the immediate need was urgent, based on, uh.
It is.
What?
It is, the middle school would be urgent.
Yeah, okay.
And then the, the.
And then go, as you go out further in years, you modify. Now, they may change next year, but, but for right now.
So if I had that correctly, it's one, one, two, two, three, three?
Yes. No, it's one, two, two, three, three, three.
Okay, so the second part of the middle school would not be considered urgent?
Tim, your microphone's not on.
Okay.
Just because it's out, two to three years.
Okay, so one, two, two, and then threes for the last three?
Yes.
Yeah, I think since urgent means needed immediately, if they're saying we're gonna do that in seventeen, eighteen, that's their, um, scheduling choice. So is everybody, anybody disagree with that approach with the roofing? Asbestos removal in Merrimack High School for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars necessary year after next.
Yep.
I don't like it, I feel it, I don't like asbestos floating around any longer than it has to be. I don't even like, with great respect to them, wanting to see them push it off to seventeen, eighteen, I'd like to see it in sixteen, seventeen, because asbestos, we now know, is a killer. And however clever, however diligent everybody is, I'd like to see that asbestos got rid of sooner than rather than later.
I agree.
Um, I, I don't necessarily disagree, however, I know from discussions with the school board about the asbestos in the floor tiles, um, and the way that they approached it over, I don't know, it was like an eight-year plan, that they've.
Been going on for thirty years.
They have, they have explained to us on quite a few occasions why it's something that you can attack over a time period, because they can protect the surface and keep it from being airborne and all of that. Asbestos insulation is the, is the, uh, most dangerous of all of the varieties of asbestos because it becomes airborne as a fiber, whereas, uh, an item like a floor tile is least likely to present that kind of a danger.
I re- I'll reframe my slightly, Mr. Chairman, I feel they should be doing asbestos removal every year, so if that means the quarter of a million in seventeen, eighteen, I'd like to see it's, some of it done in sixteen, seventeen. I don't, I hate to think of them going from, I mean, if we, let's face it, what we're talking about is doing that in the August or July and August of two thousand and eighteen, no, I don't like it.
Um, I, I, I won't resist if you wanna make that kind of a suggestion to them, I think also from a practical standpoint, they happen to have it in their highest dollar year and could probably smooth out their budget by moving it up a year.
That would've been my suggestion, because you've got that huge.
They've got almost four million dollars that year.
If we can pull it out of there, I, I, we can leave it as necessary, but I'd like to see it pushed into the sixteen, seventeen year.
And so our recommendation would be necessary, but moved up a year?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Good.
Okay. I think that their paving projects are also necessary and that they've selected them right, I hope that they're getting the benefit from the town of the best bargain they can and it sounds like they are. I agree with their approach to take it a bit at a time, just because it's a big chunk to swallow. Any thoughts on those?
I would just like to recommend that they, uh, consider pedestrian transportation, uh, along with that, along with these projects as they go.
I think they got that message.
Yeah, but I'd like to have it as part of our.
Yeah, no, I agree with Nelson on that, we have actually taken that step with the town in the past of putting that as, eh, into the minutes and into a memo to them saying we've, um, agreed that it's necessary in the time schedule, but please consider incorporating pedestrian. Consolidating the special services SAU office as necessary for the seventeen, eighteen year at almost two million dollars.
I don't think you can move that at all, I think you gotta do, I think they need that much time to get it planned correctly, so I don't think you can bring it in any closer, but I, I def- definitely think it's necessary.
It's really needed.
I think that it is necessary to do something with their offices, um, I, I know that they're reworking their own thoughts in terms of what the future plan is, where it's this tennis court site or this other site or all of that. I'm really intrigued that there's a space assessment report that's available to take a look at, to see, and, um, eh, I know that consultants' reports often, you know, produce the desired result, so, but at least you'll see, uh, what they've identified as being available.
Could I just add the rider that Lynn started and I would con- support is that they do consider attaching it to the high school? Cause I still think it'll be cheaper, but I just, if you're in, could put it in the.
Even if, even if it's not cheaper, I.
I would like to see it attached to the.
Usability of it is what I like.
It may be, I mean, I can also think of reasons why having the certain services separated from any of the core school, however, I think that perhaps the best recommendation that we could make on this is for them to, um, approach it with an open mind and a blank piece of paper and consider every option.
I think they got that message.
Yeah, I think so, too.
I don't think we need to add anything into this.
Any thought, any other thoughts on SE office, Desiree?
I was just gonna add, I, I'd really like to see this go through, keep pushing forward on it, because the, it was originally urgent and I, I maintain, I know many people in the community that really felt strongly that this needs to be dealt with quickly, um, so I would encourage, um, them pressing forward with it as soon as possible.
Twenty-year note projected? So the, the dollar impact, the appropriation impact for that year would be high, but the dollar impact would be relatively low.
Oh, that's true.
Yep.
Yeah, I got you. So following the school district's recommendation on that one, on the drainage, um, they've iden- they've identified as necessary improvements at J Muse in eighteen, nineteen for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I agree.
I agree.
Uh, you know, I certainly agree. Um, the track upgrade is urgent for the coming year at four hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Definitely.
Hard to argue with any of that, I think we heard, heard that as loud as we could. Um, the bleacher upgrade, um, as necessary to replace bleachers first at the high school and, eh, no, not first, at the high school and J Muse in the same year for the prices listed. Hard to argue with either one of those two, I agree.
Although I wonder whether the bleachers shouldn't, we should try, if they can, if they're doing the track, why not try and get the high school bleachers done at the same time?
Maybe, I don't know if it's the same company that does.
No, it won't be, but I'm, I'm still thinking if you do, if you're having a bite of the, you know, you produce the new track, for goodness sake, let the people sit and wash it, but.
Uh, yeah, I, it's certainly sensitive to that, I was also sensitive to their message that these new bleachers would, um, meet with ADA standards and I think.
That's another good reason, Mr. Chairman.
If we're falling short on the ADA standards, which was adopted in nineteen ninety, um, maybe it's time to come on board with it. Ninety-two.
And if you pull the bleachers by the track out and bring them forward to the sixteen, seventeen year year, again, equalizing that budget somewhat.
That's what I was thinking, too.
I don't have a problem with that sort of a recommendation, I know that they've gotta make a decision in terms of their budget and what we say in those timings, but, so, bleacher upgrade is necessary, moving it, uh, up a year to sixteen, seventeen?
For the high school.
For the high school piece.
Yeah. Leave, leave J Muse at seventeen.
Leave the J Muse where it is.
Okay. Um, the field upgrade at the, uh, football field of the high school.
I agree.
I agree with that, I think it's interesting to see how, um, their knowledge will develop between now and the time that it is to purchase it, whether there's a change in the kinds of products that are available or whether this, um, question of what's carcinogenic or not sorted out.
Two high schools that have got, who've put them in, which is Wyndham and Bedford, who've both got artificial tracks, artificial fields, I beg to tell.
Artificial fields, yeah, Manchester West does as well.
I didn't know that.
Um, yeah, my daughter played a lacrosse game on that field, it's really kinda cool, except for the drainage right at the edge of the field is not padded at all.
The drainage is terrible, I've saw, I saw somebody get hurt there, they fell on that, they had a metal edge.
Yeah, it's a metal grate right at the edge of the carpet.
And the kid fell on it and cut herself a little bit, it was kinda bad.
So.
slowed the game down.
Okay, so we support the, the.
Yep.
Uh, school district's position on the field upgrade is necessary, window replacement is necessary for the high school in a couple of stages over seventeen, eighteen and then a little bit further out at twenty-one, twenty-two.
And consistent with what we did on roofing, I would do the twenty-one, twenty-two as desirable.
Yes, I would agree, two and three.
There's a three.
So necessary for the first block and desirable for the second block?
Just be consistent.
Okay, no, any problem with that, does anybody have any questions with that? Technology infrastructure replace is necessary, um, in roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollar bites into the foreseeable future.
And knowing, knowing what's going on with technology, I think it's necessary all the way across.
I would agree.
Even though that kinda breaks with our, our specific criteria, I think it, it's always gonna be necessary to do that and it may be necessary to regularly do a little bit more. Okay, so to, do we wanna recap it all, has everybody got that in their memory and just wanna vote on it?
I've got it.
Tim, you got it? Okay, all in favor of?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the, what we've deliberated, we put, as a, as a one-state motion, that we accept this as the, our consideration of the capital expenditure, some of capital improvement plan from the Merrimack School District.
Second by Mr. Sebring, so motion by Mr. Milne, second by Mr. Sebring, for the benefit of our note takers at home, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? So there are seven of us, seven now that I'm here, seven zero zero to approve that recommendation. Thank you all for your presentation and for hanging out with us a little bit. Coming back to the.
Eight.
What's that?
Eight.
We only have seven members.
One, two, three, four, five.
Nelson isn't a voting member right now.
I didn't vote.
Nelson's not a voting member.
Oh, because, no, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't worry.
Never mind.
We're never more than seven.
Right.
Okay, coming back to the town's capital improvement plan, uh, the first item on their list is the south fire station at three point one million dollars, um, projected in twenty eighteen, nineteen, partially funded by bonds, partially funded by donation, partially funded by the Capital Reserve Fund.
Desirable.
Desirable at twenty eighteen, nineteen.
Yeah, it's kind of on there as a placeholder, but it's still out there kinda far. They're not, it doesn't seem like it's, eh, eh, by their definition, necessary, just.
Right.
Yeah, I tend to agree, I mean, they put it, their, their first column is actually this year, so they're putting it three years out, not four, but, um, I tend to agree that they haven't quite hardened up their plans for what they want and what they need yet, so.
I think they can harden up their plans to what they want in the circumstances.
Well, I agree.
So just desirable.
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 You know, we, we underuse the, the, sort of the lower ranks of premature, where it needs more research and planning and all that, but this is probably one of those that actually does need more research and planning. I don't wanna necessarily disparage what the, what the town, um, administration has come up with, but.
What's, what's four?
Four is deferable.
Four is deferable.
What's that?
What more research and planning?
Well, if your pipeline changes your plans, you're gonna move to a different site, if you don't know what the size is, I mean.
We know what the size is. That's been done.
Okay, then go with it, go with necessary or deferable, whatever you wanna do.
I think it's desirable.
The only, the only difficulty we're having is trying to sequence this with other capital budgeting projects, in terms of the cost, uh, on the tax rate. Cause right now, you're looking at six million dollars in two consecutive years in bonding, between the school district and the town, the way you've got this thing laid out here. And that, something's gonna die, if not both of, both of the projects each year.
Well, that's why I wanted to hear both of them before we started doing this.
Yeah, no, I, I, I understand.
We could do that.
You know, this is, you know, we're looking at, uh, uh, a signi- this year, a significant increase in activity for the department.
Yep.
We have significant development coming in, especially in the south end town, that's gonna have an impact, and so, you know, the, 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 the timing of this thing is the, is the, is the, is the piece of it is.
But I, I hear what you're saying and, eh, what I heard from the town manager is we're still making some decisions, we've got some things that could change our product, project pretty significantly, but that said, I really don't have a strong position one way or another, whatever anybody, whatever folks suggest is the right way to rank it.
If I may butt in, last year, the town manager did indicate to us that she was trying to work out that the, the core demand between fires or what I call the EM, eh, health and safety type thing, you know, the, the engines going out, it's not really putting a fire out, it's, it's dealing with somebody's had a heart attack. I don't know if that can, somebody has been, that report has been concluded, or that exercise has been concluded. Certainly, I noticed that they brought an ambulance up to the south fire station, uh, instead of having two engines there, and they, well, they put the green monster outside in a tent. It seems to me that that's the, I get the feeling that that's the greatest demand is in fact.
Oh, it is, oh, there's no question.
So.
Yeah, no, it definitely is, and when you read their description, they talk about how it's, they, they list placing ambulances there in addition to storing fire equipment, but, um, at any rate, I mean, I don't wanna, I don't wanna spend a whole night knowing on this one, it's something that's, we're gonna see in at least three more.
Twice more before.
CIPs before we get there, so.
So the kids, consensus is desirable or?
Desirable.
Desirable, I'm fine with that. Um, the bridge replacement on Bean Road is in the current year, so it doesn't require a rating, the bridge replacement on Bedford Road at, at Babusick Brook at two point seven million dollars.
Necessary.
Necessary? Anybody disagree? Bridge replacement at US three, Babusick Brook, two, five, two, zero.
Desirable.
No, necessary.
I, I think it's very necessary and I wish that the, the finances would support doing it faster.
No, it will not.
I know, you can't, but.
The, uh, the contribution sides, uh.
You won't get it from the government.
Won't get it from the government, uh, you know, they're not gonna do it that way.
But it's necessary.
No, I get it, I get it, okay. Necessary is fine. What's that?
Does it fall to desirable?
No, that bridge is desperate.
No, no, I know, I'm just talking about time, I'm just talking about the timing that
No, I know. I'm just talking about time. I'm just talking about the timing that we have here.
Yeah, but if you're going to get the eighty percent from the state, you're going to have to fit in with what, when the state's got eighty percent to give you.
As it's on here, it's within three years, which is in the necessary category.
And right now we've got that sequenced.
And I think they would push it earlier if they could, but it, it can't be, so I think it stays as necessary.
So unless it collapses.
God help us.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's don't do that. Stormwater drainage improvements at about a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars a year continuously. I think that those should be necessary even though they do reach out into the future, almost like the technology.
It's consistent along, just like our, our technology one was.
Yeah, and the same goes for item six, I would suggest, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I think the paving is the same thing, that it's necessary, but it's not only necessary in the first year, but it's necessary to do it a little bit at a time every year. Paving the gravel roads in seventeen eighteen through nineteen and twenty at about a hundred thousand dollars apiece. I read the explanation of those. It made a lot of sense in terms of getting them done and also avoiding the possibility of having to buy a motor grader or, or replacing the motor grader. I thought their estimate of the cost of motor grader probably will light, but.
So we leave that as necessary as well.
I think that that should stay necessary. Paving D W Highway is this year, it's done. The infrastructure improvements at Executive Park Drive made a lot of sense to me that that's just such a wide road that requires extra maintenance because of it. So I don't have a problem with that one staying necessary if everybody agrees. I think that the highway garage renovation replacement, even though they've put it out a couple of years.
I think it's urgent.
I think it's urgent too.
Keep the message.
I mean, I don't think that the council disagrees. I think that, that.
I think it has to go out that far just, just because of logistics, but, but it is urgent. If it was a, a lower level, I would do it.
The wire road intersection improvements for five hundred thousand dollars in eighteen nineteen.
Well, I think that's deferrable. Or certainly, or alternatively, needs more knowledge because they said it's going to be, depend on traffic study, so it's actually five, not four.
Well, the, the layout is dependent on the traffic study.
Yeah.
The fact that they want to do it in the same year that they do the Bedford, the Babusick, the Route Three Bridge because of the proximity.
Makes sense.
That makes sense.
So necessary then?
At least.
I think it is necessary. I don't, I mean, they did talk about a number of accidents and I don't know whether there's a more dangerous intersection. Perhaps there is, but this is certainly one that's caused some accidents and is difficult to navigate. I hope that the choice of designs doesn't end up with another traffic light there because as much as anybody might suggest that that'll stop them from backing up, it won't. It'll cause it to back up and they won't be coordinated because the lights are never coordinated, so.
And when there's a purr out, you'll now have three sets of lights within about quarter of a mile all out. You'll have half the Merrimack Police Force standing there delivering traffic.
Well, in some circumstances, the traffic runs better when nobody's there, so.
Yeah, because it works like a traffic circle when nobody's there.
Lights around.
People can't emerge in the middle of it.
You just made a case for a roundabout, so, in all of them.
Well, I thought it was interesting in the presentation, they were talking about their concern about a roundabout was the notion that it might back up traffic and I've never approached a roundabout and had backed up traffic. I've never in my life come up to a roundabout and said I can't get in there.
Never done it in New Jersey.
Well, you're right. You're right, I haven't, but I, we're not going to build this one in New Jersey either.
I understand that, I'm just saying.
They're also the one on Route One in Massachusetts, can get a bit blocked up.
In fairness, I think he was talking about backing up from Babusick Lake Road into the, into the circle. That's the backup he was talking about, that the traffic light.
It's not the approaching traffic, it's the traffic are at the light backing up.
Backing up, and it, that really does, it backs all the way to Dunkin' Donuts.
That, that traffic is a mess in the morning.
Which is why you should.
Which is why you need us.
That to a second round.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm for roundabout, but I'm just telling you.
They need argument.
Oh, that's why they're.
All right, let's, let's spare the rest of my evening and not beat this dead horse anymore.
I think are actually desirable.
The Griffin Street Boat Ramp and the Severance Bridge Canoe Launch Ramp?
Just because of what they are.
Yes, I think you have to put those as desirable.
Can I ask, is there any user fees on those?
No.
No.
No. There's no policing, there's no.
There's no way you could put a user fee on them.
Not affordably.
Put a watchman there to collect two dollars.
No, you'd have to put a body down there to try and make sure that everybody had.
No, you have to gate and you have to put a coin in the gate.
So I think both of them are just desirable.
I would agree with Lynn.
I agree with that. South Hegan River Trail.
Necessary.
Necessary. Sewer line extension from Mayflower, I'm a question.
It's already funded, it's going.
That one, I have a bother with that one because you're talking about two point three million for twenty-three houses.
The sewer line extension, you're.
If it's part of the overall sewer master plan.
Sewer master plan.
It is.
It is.
Well, I, it being part of the sewer master plan is only half the answer to me. I mean, I want to make sure that it's part of the sewer master plan because it's an interim step that leads to some other connection that they're going to be able to add to this and build on the building blocks.
It's expanding the sewer route.
I know, but I want to know that the twenty-three houses aren't sort of all we're going to get out of this and that they're some.
You wouldn't even get twenty-three houses to start with. Half of them have got septic systems which are still working, functioning. You'll only get about five houses on probably.
That, that could well be the case. Now, when I read it, they're talking about building eight-inch lines and you don't build eight-inch lines for any houses in the twenties. Eight-inch lines are for big volumes.
Yes.
And there are places where.
Desirable.
People can extend it beyond, that's what I.
As far as it is, it may fall into the desirable just by being four to six years out.
I think it's desirable because of where we've extended it.
Well, I think it's deferrable. If we're short of money, that one's the one that would, I'd move out.
Yeah.
Well, it happens to hit in a pretty hot year of spending with.
That's what I thought.
Waste water improvements, but.
But that comes off of sewer fees that are to pay for.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, no, all of them do. I mean, but, I get it. Okay.
And that's factored into the rate study that, that was done five years ago.
So are we set with desirable on the sewer line?
I am.
I am.
That was the majority I heard.
The majority is.
I agree.
Parking lot paving at the library, forty-five thousand dollars next year.
Necessary?
It's probably necessary.
I think that it is necessary and I think it's a darn shame that they feel like they got to take this step on a building that they would love to get out of, but at the same time, the parking lot's in some really lousy shape.
Well, there are a lot worse parking lots. I, I don't think it's that bad. I mean, I didn't fall down any potholes.
Their description said there was lots of potholes.
Well, it says parking and walk, the walkway, I mean, oh, well, it's only forty-five thousand, but I would have said it was deferrable because of building a new library.
That's.
Nobody's building a new library yet. Not till the placeholder, twenty-one twenty-two.
If we don't, if we don't do it next year, then the year after it may not fit in numerically. So then you're looking at a few years out and we still don't have a new library and we've never fixed the parking lot, so it's going to get worse. I don't know, I'm all right with it where it is, is necessary.
I am too.
Desirable?
I think, I like it as necessary and to do it next year.
I've heard a majority of necessary.
A majority is necessary? Okay. Pass cards and security cameras for the library in seventeen eighteen.
I wish we had talked about that.
We didn't talk about it in great detail. It was a little bit of a write-up in the materials that were sent out to us.
I'm not convinced.
I think that it's interesting that the library is deciding to put that in their own budget rather than sort of asking for some capital expenditures for that.
Well, the library budget is really separate and controlled by the library trustees.
Once it's adopted.
Right. And that's why I think Paul didn't get into a lot of detail here.
And in the past, we have had the library trustees or, or Yvette or somebody come and talk to us about their budgets. With that.
I don't understand what it is.
They want to have the staff be able to enter through staff entrances using pass cards and they want to have security cameras in the building to kind of watch the flow of people.
I think that's silly.
I am not sure I understand what the security risk is at the library.
How many books have you stolen?
It's not the book, think about, no, think about the safety of the people that are there. I mean, yes, it's not like a school or whatever, but in light of, you know, the heightened security, if you will, of the nation, if you look at it that way, I can kind of see maybe where they're coming from. In terms of the book security.
Well, I understand, to some extent, I understand the pass card system because the schools have got it. But the schools don't have security cameras all through the school, so you can watch what the kids are doing.
No, they don't do that, but even the pass cards, the, so the employees come through the back door and they got a pass card, but the front door is open and unlocked and I can walk right in. And so, wanted to do something wrong, wanted to use that door.
Well, yeah, but that gives them access to other areas internally.
All right.
I think this is deferrable.
I want to argue.
I'd like to know more about it or call it.
Premature.
Premature.
Is that four?
Deferrable is four, premature is five. I'm fine with deferrable, if everybody else is. Anybody object to deferrable? Let's call that deferrable. H vac in the library, way out in the future. Sprinkler system in the library, way out in the future.
They're talking about a new building, I think both of those are deferrable.
Well, I think that they're not just deferrable, if they're going, if they're.
At least it's premature, if not inconsistent.
Yeah, those are.
I think it's premature at this point because they're replacing a building at the same time they're talking about a sprinkler and H vac in the old building and it's going to be one or the other. So somehow there's got to be some more development of this plan, but then, and I think that they plan on it, which is why they wrote the words placeholder next to their library. What about the library itself, the placeholder? It's out, since it's, since they're calling it a placeholder, it's premature. Same with the athletic fields. If they're calling it a placeholder and they're putting it out seven, six years, it's premature.
We don't even have a write-up on either of those projects because of their nature, so I.
Okay, Tim, you got all those detail, oh, let's go over the wastewater. Executive Park Drive Pump Station for about a million dollars in twenty twenty and twenty-one. As I've read through these, they're talking about pump stations that are forty years old and obsolete and not repairable and can't get parts and also sort of the nature of what the next event occurrence is when one of the pump stations stops behaving as a pump station. It's hard to argue with whatever they want to do.
I think all three of those are going to be desirable.
Or necessary.
I think they're desirable because of the time horizon that they put them on and as that time gets closer, they're certainly going to be necessary or even urgent as they get closer, but just because they've put it out five years.
Can somebody explain what we do with sawdust?
What's that?
Can somebody explain what we do with sawdust?
We make compost out of the sludge from the treatment plant and we sell it. Or we give it away to, to locals in town and we sell it to other communities.
It's a moneymaker.
Yes, it's also the subsurface in Fenway Park, so I'm told.
Oh.
Fenway Park.
Fenway.
And, and a bunch of other places.
All right, so I've got those all set. I need a motion.
Is there a motion to approve the C I P as we've discussed?
We approve the C I P as we have discussed.
Second.
For the town and the wastewater.
Motion by Ms. Christiansen, second by Ms. Fault. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero. That brings us to discussion, possible action regarding other items of concern. Are there any other items of concern? I have none at nine-thirty. Motion by Ms. Christiansen to approve the minutes of December first as printed. Is there a second?
I'll sit, go ahead.
Go on.
Second by Ms. Fault.
I have comments.
Let's have them.
I have, okay, so just a couple of clarification and then a couple of actual questions to it. On page two, line thirty-eight, I think that, that whole paragraph would kind of make more sense if we made the clarification. It said the existing septic system is oversized because then when you're talking about it, it makes reference that it's existing and it's going to be okay. There's some sort of vague, vagueness in page three, line item nine. And I'll actually start at seven. It says Chris Tumula said that he tried to minimize interaction of trucks with the donut shop and drive-through window by moving everything more to the rear.
Moving the traffic lanes more to the rear?
Yeah.
Pumps, service.
No, it's the office.
The pumps weren't moving, it was just the traffic.
Parts of the building.
Or is it, is it the access road around the building?
To the rear of the building is what that.
Yeah.
Well, my question, what was said? I mean, well, because the minutes are about what was said generally. And having watched the meeting online and having obviously reviewed the plans, the work that is being proposed is all to the rear of the building. That's where all the work is taken place.
So when you say we're moving everything, what's being moved?
It's the drive-through and the location of the construction of the addition.
How about developing everything to the rear?
There you go.
Of the building.
Of the building, yes, good call. Because it's not that other parking lot. Moving everything to the rear of the building.
What else you got, Desiree?
All right. Same page, line item twenty-two. A queue of nine is pretty good, maybe reasonable in their experience perhaps, rather than pretty good, unless you actually said pretty good.
That is a direct quote.
Ow, well then. Also, one, one question, this is the formatting on this. On the page three of twelve, line item seventeen, we got the little.
There's a couple of track changes that didn't get.
So that'll get picked up. Yeah, because a bunch of my rest of them, I didn't have solutions to that because I course didn't catch it till here. Hold on a second, hold on a second.
Second by Ms. Fault. Any other discussion regarding the minutes?
Oh, about to leave it, yeah. All right, I'm good.
You done?
Done.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? One abstaining, Mr. Mahon, Councilor Mahon?
Yes, my apologies. I had a bad day on Tuesday and I completely spaced the meeting.
No, I understand. Everybody deserves one of those.
Mr. Jevan, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion for Mr. Milne, second by Councilor Mahon to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Don't forget to turn your microphones off.